So, good afternoon, everyone. May I call upon members of the visiting public to this meeting, a full council which is being held upon Spode International Sports Centre. Please can I ask the Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing at all times. Please wear a face covering at all times within the venue unless you have an exemption. It can be removed once seated, but you may wish to leave it on. Hand sanitiser will be available for you to use. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting and do not congregate around exits and entrances. Follow any signage which is provided, such as one-way systems, to help keep you safe. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at the front of the building. Can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode? Roman microphones will be used for councillors wishing to speak from the main floor of the meeting room. When the Lord Mayor invites you to speak, please stand so that you can be easily seen and then wait for the microphone to be brought to you by a member of the Democratic Services Team before you begin to speak, so that you can be heard clearly. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. Sheffield Live TV also plan to record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects to be recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech, and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Gillian. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating... Just bear with us. May I ask councillors to now take their seats, please? Kirk Curran, Don Grokot, Huggan, Mohammed Wilson, Gibson, Dam and Tony Downs. Are there any other... Apologies for absence that I have not read out? Okay, thank you. Item three on the agenda, declarations of interest. This item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. When declaring an interest, the member should refer to the item of business, state whether it is pecuniary or personal interest, and outline the reasons for the declaration. Does any member of the council wish to declare an interest? Yes, councillor Teale?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to clarify, a person of interest, I'm a director in a installation company.
Thank you. Which are several items, did you say?
Several items, I think. Not energy sprung, no, I must hasten to that.
Thank you for that. Are there any other councillors wanting to declare an interest? I can't see anyone's hand up. Okay. Item four, public questions and petitions and other communications. Public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at the council meeting. Questions or petitions are required to be submitted two clear days in advance of these Covid-safe meetings to enable public attendance at the meeting to be managed in a safe way. For this meeting, six petitions will be presented and questions will be taken from five members of the public. A period of sixty seconds is allowed in total for the ordinary petitions and questions. Finally, there is one petition... Oh, I think it's come, did you say? Sorry, I'll just delete that. We were told that somebody wasn't coming, but now I've found out they are. Okay. Finally, there's one further petition which will be debated at the end of this item of business. This is the one referred to on the agenda for this meeting. Ordinary petitions. Can I call upon the Director of Legal and Governance to announce the petitions? And may I request that petitioners be brief and keep within the time limit of three minutes? May I also request that the executive members keep within the maximum time limit of five minutes when responding to the petitions? May I also ask the questioners to be as brief as possible when asking their questions, and that the executive members keep their responses short and succinct? Thank you for that in advance. I'd like to just say to councillor Johnson, you've had quite a few petitions that's relating to the item on the agenda for debate, so if you could be quick with your answers, and I'll make sure that those petitioners all get to ask their questions consecutively. So... There is a... Can I call upon Richard Hennessy? Please?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received a joint electronic and paper petition containing 3,890 signatures requesting the council to give consideration to the provision of burial sites for the Muslim community as part of the local plan process. Ibra Hussein wishes to address the council. Mr Hussein, if you want to come forward. Thank you.
Can you hear me, Lord Mayor? Good afternoon, everybody. And can I first... Can I first of all correct the officer? It's 4,459 signatures, including those on the internet as well, online as well. Lord Mayor, this petition is very important because of the burial sites in Sheffield. At this present moment of time, we have one main burial site at Shire Green. We have a problem at Donald Tinsley, which the burial cemetery is full, and also the problem at Abbey Lane as well. We have a cemetery Muslim section, which I'm referring to, at City Road as well. The problem is due to pandemic as well and the growth of the community. The sites are now almost full, and I think councillor Shafak was at one of the burials on Shire Green with the new section. And as I was talking to him as well, he couldn't believe that the speed that section is getting filled up as well, and I think pandemic has made that even more worse, and every day there are burials. What I'm calling for in this petition is very clear, that we need a proper framework and a forward plan, and also in the local plan, which is I think in part of the agenda today as well, that this needs to be discussed. And because of the ever-growing community now in Sheffield, Muslim community, we need to make sure that we don't plan for two or three years, but we need to plan ahead for many years ahead. The Chinese proverb is that you cannot just plant for... Plant a tree if you want to plant, plant fifty years ahead. So we need to plan ahead for our community, make sure we have a provision that is available and accessible as well to... For the community as well. So I'm calling for this to go to some kind of a scrutiny process, whatever the new process will be. I want a cabinet member, if you can, set up a working group so we go through all the pros and the cons, and also what's needed. In Sheffield, my understanding is that if one JCP is available on one of these cemeteries, and if there's one needed, if it's because of the weather, we have to supply from one cemetery to another, and we have to give seventy-two hours notice. That's not acceptable. We need, out of the box thinking, plan ahead and have sites that are available for the community, because the provision is only for next two or three years. The rate we are going at with the current climate is not going to be enough, and we don't want to be scratching our heads when it hits us on the head. So I am asking that a proper scrutiny process is set in place, part of the local plan, which discussions you might have today and in the future, that is also put in place as well. And we all work together and cross-party, and I would like to thank both the Labour councillors, the Labour Democrats, the Green councillors, who I've talked to, who are very supportive. This isn't party political, this is a community issue, and I will ask, let's work together as a community, set up a working group to go through the issues that we can come up with and how we resolve this, and a proper report is brought through a scrutiny process cabinet and to this council, that we can be proud of as a community, to lead the way forward. Petition is a way to make sure that we address our issues and bring it to your attentions. If somebody says, oh, nothing to worry, we are resolving this, I think that is not the issue here. The community know, needs to know in clear terms and your commitment, that you are going to resolve this and going to resolve it for the community that's in Sheffield. Lord Mayor, I've got a signal, I've got another petition. If I finish this and I'll come back to the other one.
I'm going to allow you to ask your other petition, but we'll answer this one first. Thank you, mister...
I'll just stand here.
Thank you, Mr Hussein. Councillor Teal, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Hussein, for bringing this petition. I know it's been a long time coming, and congratulations on getting 4,559 signatures for your petition. Clearly, this is a really important and pressing issue for many people in the community. As you've said, we've got four designated sites for specifically for, well, not only for Muslim burial, but people are commonly buried there. City Road and Shire Green are still available, but as you've mentioned, Tinsley and Abbey... Tinsley, Donald and Abbey Lane are no longer available. This means that we do need to find new sites, and officers are very much aware of this. I know that councillor Abdul Khum from Labour has been doing work on this, and also councillor Mohammed Marouf from the Lib Dems has also been doing work on this as well. And what we've done now is we are going to set up a stakeholder group to look at, actually take a multi-faith approach as well, because there are a number of other communities that also have special provisions. You mentioned about the time-sensitive issue for Muslim burial. I'm told that there are more staff receiving training to use diggers, so they're able to speed up that process of providing grave plots as and when necessary in a timely manner. Also, yeah, did I say we're going to set up a stakeholders group? Yes, and you might want to be a part of that, perhaps. It will comprise of councillors from various areas as well as members of the public, so if you'd like to get involved, that would be excellent, and staff as well. We've got, currently got six years provision available, which I hope is reassuring, and of course, we do need to have a longer-term strategy, more like twenty years, and so in speaking with colleagues in property services to ensure that we have land available. I hope that satisfies you, and thank you very much for bringing this to our attention and getting this issue addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Teal. Would you like to ask your next petition for us, please, Mr Hussein?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you for the cabinet member, the last one, and yes, put my name down for the stakeholders group, so I'll email you my details. Lord Mayor, the petition I've handed was a very quick one on taxis, but because of the CAS issue, which is coming into effect in September, I've even had phone calls today as well. Private hire drivers and black cab drivers are ringing to say, please extend our... Because vehicles with private hire ends at years, nine years old when they are, extend that, extra five, six months, and also on the black cab there, and fifteen, if you can same, five or six months on that as well. The petition states that. Also, the vehicles aren't available on the market due to the Euro six and Euro fours, due to the new vehicles production with a chip of some kind, it's not been made available, and the prices have gone second-hand vehicles sixty percent up as well. So what we are asking is also on the entry of the vehicle, on private hire vehicles and black cabs, that the current is entry age is up to five years. If that could be increased to six years, because then we can, drivers can afford to buy them. Otherwise, we can't afford to buy these new vehicles. Black cab is fifty-six thousand pound, electric one, I can't afford to buy that, and it's nine hundred and fifty pound a month, and also the private hire drivers, they are all struggling. On the licensing meeting on Monday, the chair made a statement saying that there will be a process. Yes, we know the process already exists. Look at the exceptional circumstances, the circumstances you had in the Covid, all the rules were put aside to address our issues. We are on our knees, on the black cab, on on the private hire. We need your help, and not just a please, a standard response. Look at it again and help us to address this issue, because drivers are struggling to make an ends meet on this. Please meet with us urgently to resolve this issue, and I don't want a standard response on this from... I'm not trying to put anyone down, but it's because the drivers are really, really affected, and when they're talking to me and other colleagues who are the representatives as well and activists, it's a real problem. I've done other petitions as well, we need some results, and also on the mixed fleet, on hackneys, we need that consultation to start imminent, because otherwise, I can tell you now, for thirty-four years of black cab driver experience, black cabs in Sheffield will be dead and finished if you do not change the specification on hackney carriages. We need saloon cars, just like a lease model, and a mixture of wheelchair cabs as well, and a balance, because otherwise we will not have a trade in Sheffield. It's a plea to you, I bring petitions, we need results, I do not want standard responses. Please, I'm not trying to put anyone down. We are, CAS is coming in September, pandemic has come, and everything has changed out there, and you've got to understand how the living cost and everything has gone up for us as well. Very grateful to the licensing committee for proving hackney carrie fare increase, they really listen, we had a good debate, and thank you to the members, and Karen and David Bach, and all of the members, really listening. But on this, they have to listen, and the cabinet member, and the council to address. Thank you, Lord Mayor, for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr Hussein. Can I call upon councillor Wood to respond, please? Can I ask Mr Hennessy to stand by? You'll be the next person, Mr Hennessy.
Thank you for the petition. I've only been back in work today, so I will catch up with the licensing officers and get back to you pretty quick on this, see what we can do, have a look at all the things that you've been... Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Can I call upon Mr Hennessy, please? And then after that, it will be Elaine Bird, so if you could stand by, please?
Thank you. My name's Richard Hennessy, I'm here to present a petition of over four hundred signatures objecting to the proposed twelve-hour bus lane on Abidale Road. It's purely the twelve-hour bus lane, rather than any of the other junction modifications, which the majority of business owners are behind one hundred percent. I work as a hypnotherapist, my wife is a pregnancy massage specialist. We're self-employed, and we run a venue on Abidale Road, where forty or so other therapists also use our space. Between us, we help people who are depressed, crippled by anxiety, they might have personality disorders, they might have any number of other physical or mental health issues going on, and they just need some help. We provide the environment where that help can happen, and we provide the therapists that can do that work. A few years ago, this council was so opposed to the environment that it spent millions of pounds and years trying to destroy healthy street trees. This same council is now trying The same council is now trying to convince us that it's so committed to the environment that it's necessary to destroy small businesses. You were wrong that time, and the small business owners think you're wrong this time. A YouGov survey from 2019 found that people who get to travel on buses for free generally have a very positive opinion of that service, while people who have to pay for that same service generally dislike buses and choose not to use them. People in London love their transport system because it's fast, comprehensive, and above all, cheap. Ours is slow, indirect, and inexpensive. It's clear that the price of transport has a massive impact on whether people use it or not. By just creating a bus lane, a 12-hour bus lane, it won't meet many of the goals that people have. It won't get people back on buses. The first thing that needs to be done before a bus lane is created, I would say, is to follow Manchester's lead, to take the bus system back into public ownership, because otherwise, private companies will be the ones setting the routes, deciding the timetables, the prices will always be high, and the parts of the city that need cheap public transport the most will get it the least. Business owners on the affected roads agree that the environment needs to be protected, but so do our livelihoods. In a similar way to the taxis, we're up against it. If this 12-hour bus lane happens, businesses will go to the wall because their customers won't be able to get to them, and they won't be able to pay their business rates, they won't be able to pay their bills, they won't be able to pay their staff. This plan is doomed to fail without first setting in place things like park-and-ride systems that service all different parts of the city. Otherwise, people from further afield, they'll just go to places like Meadow Hall, they've done that for decades. We all saw the money drain out of the city centre, the second Meadow Hall opened. If this 12-hour bus lane goes ahead, then the money will be drained out of Abidale and Ecclesall. Some people have to drive because there's no alternative. A heavily pregnant woman coming for a massage can't get a bus into town and then a bus out of town to come for a session and then do the same journey back. A person getting physiotherapy for a painful foot injury can't cycle to their appointment. A person with chronic anxiety can't sit on a bus surrounded by other people. The bus lane plans will have the hardest impact on the most vulnerable, the most in need, the disabled, and the poorest. And when your own councillors are reported in local media as refusing to water down plans before the consultation's even over, and in the face of thousands of people objecting, it simply contributes to an impression that this debate is more about box ticking. It feels like you don't give a damn about the people like me, the 40 therapists who use my space, and the people that we work with. We're going to be forced to watch our businesses go to the wall if this plan is forced through without actually listening to what people are saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy, and I call upon councillor Johnson to respond, please.
Thank you for bringing the petition, and first of all, I don't doubt the sincerity of what you're saying. It's obviously a really important proposal to have a look at some bus lanes, but I think what would be really helpful, and I'm trusting that you have put in some comments to the consultation that's been ongoing, because actually, that will be really valuable. What is really helpful is to know the exact impact of the proposals that are out there on the way that your business operates. And I know you haven't really talked about that today, but I trust you have sent that in to officers. In general sense, of course, I think I certainly agree with many of the things you said, just looking at in particular about the fact of buses being slow, indirect, and expensive, and that's actually absolutely right, it's fundamentally a problem, that, frankly, at the moment, we have poor public transport in Sheffield, and it is something that we all want to do something about. I'm sure you'll hear lots of fine words today about how we've all supported bringing buses into public ownership for many years, but it hasn't happened. And that's not solely because it's actually not the council, it's the transport authority here. But we do need to have some radical thought about how that is brought about. 12-hour bus lanes is an idea where actually this council is slowly catching up with national policy, which says that really bus lanes should be bus lanes, but obviously, with the existing layout of roads like Abidale and Ecclesall...
Councillor Johnson.
That's okay. Just a response.
Thank you.
I'm sure Miss Hennessy wants to know this, and hopefully, we can hear more about this afterwards. But the point is that we have an important initiative there to consult on, and I mean, I'll conclude at this point by just reminding you, of course, I hope you did put in the comments to consultation, they're being analysed at the moment, and we'll have to see what people say. I'm sure there's a wide range of responses in there, but certainly, the ones about local businesses needing access is absolutely, without question, something to take out. It's an important factor. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Can I call upon Elaine Bird and just remind the petitioner and councillor Johnson that this will be debated later in the meeting? So if you could just keep the questions and answers short, please?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. This petition relates to the section of London Road from St Mary's Gate to Sherravell Road. I am presenting this petition on two counts. I have taken a snapshot of the conditions on one day in particular after checking conditions on two days the previous week. Firstly, the apparent lack of regular enforcement of the current parking restrictions on London Road is leading to very poor flow of traffic in and out of the city centre. Added to this is the number of illegally parked cars, 43 on the 31st of January at 6:15, many of them idling. One car was actually parked facing opposing traffic on an actual bus stop. This in turn is increasing the levels of pollution to such an extent that my daughter can't be the only person who used to park and then walk into work along London Road and will no longer do so. The air quality must be harmful at all levels for all people who live, work, cycle, and walk in this area. This situation will not encourage people to walk and cycle through the area. These are councillor Johnson's preferred options for people travelling around Sheffield. The council has licensed these premises at the bottom of London Road. There are 35 takeaway premises that were open on the Monday and five that were not, and they must have known what the parking issues would be. The current conditions in this area must affect the smooth running of buses in and out of the city. If you cannot be bothered to sort out this issue, then I come to my second point. I am also presenting this petition in support of those who are objecting to the proposed increases in parking, stopping, and loading restrictions on Abidale and Ecclesall Roads. If you cannot or will not enforce the regulations on this short stretch of London Road, please do not add further restrictions on Abidale and Ecclesall Roads, which will only be observed by a vet for you.
Thank you. Can I ask Miss Basharat to be prepared after councillor Johnson's addressed the last petitioner? Councillor Johnson?
Again, thank you for the petition, it's just very general comments there rather than relating to a specific business. But again, actually, I think you made some good points there about the levels of illegal parking, the level of idling, the levels of air pollution that are being caused there, and you quite rightly, those are issues that should be addressed. And of course, you'll hear from other people today who don't agree with that and who don't agree with the stronger enforcement of that. So again, we get a mix of responses. You've probably put in some responses to the consultation that's been ongoing, that's what it's for. But yeah, it is a common theme that we get, actually right across the city, that more could be done to enforce people who do act in an antisocial way by parking in a dangerous way, causing road dangers, and idling all over the place. So yeah, I think we've got those comments, and hopefully, they can go into the mix too. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Miss Basharat, please, come to the microphone.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Lord Mayor, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Nigga Bisharan, and I live in Netheredge. The petition I'm presenting today is on behalf of the businesses impacted by the bus lane proposals, if these proposals go ahead, and this will result in business premises closing, job losses, and a huge loss of vital services for our communities. Netheredge residents are very concerned that they may lose these independent businesses, which form part of our multicultural community. They add to the vibrancy and buzz, we don't want to be left with rows of empty shops. You will all be aware that it has been and continues to be a very, very challenging environment for many, many businesses for almost two years now. Businesses on Abidale Road have faced dramatic reductions in demand, with many closing temporarily or operating at significantly reduced levels. The recent wave of Covid-19 continues to create further uncertainty and anxiety for these businesses. This is why we want you to pause the bus lane changes. We all know, pre-pandemic, public transport has had its own challenges, and now, due to driver shortages, we see changes to the buses' timetable on a regular basis. Bus drivers have also been on strike, requesting better pay and conditions. Like many other key workers, they deserve our appreciation and deserve better pay and conditions. We all want a reliable, comfortable, and affordable bus service, but we have the opposite. The local independent businesses, their customers and residents, said they were not aware of the proposals and the deadline was too short by the time they knew about this. These businesses and residents contacted me to ask for the information for the council to extend the deadline. Thankfully, the consultation first phase was extended to the 21st Feb. We also requested an earlier meeting for the concerned business owners to be able to share their impact of the proposals. I did attend a meeting on behalf of those businesses that were not able to attend due to night-time trading, not comfortable with online, and at 6:30 was not ideal for the night traders, which I shared at the meeting and requested a possibility of a daytime meeting so that those traders could also share their views. All those I have engaged with have also shared, they are just as concerned about the climate change and the wellbeing of their families and communities they serve, but the council needs to ensure that by aiming to sort one issue, they are not ruining the livelihoods of these people. I urge the council and the leadership to intervene if we want to save these independent businesses and jobs. These proposals must be altered, many voices still need to be heard, and they must be involved throughout this process. We also need a public transport system that works for Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, another petition, and again, some good points there, and actually, you made some good points about general trading conditions that go on there, and certainly down Abidale Road as well as Ecclesall Road, and yeah, we do appreciate it's been pretty difficult over the last two or three years. That, of course, suggests it's not caused by bus lanes because they've been affected by adverse trading conditions without bus lanes being in place. So actually, maybe we need to step outside the sort of instinctive reaction of, you know, bus lanes will kill businesses, it's a big assumption, and look instead at, well, what could we do? What could we do to make those roads more of an attractive place? I mean, I do know from speaking to the traders there that actually, it's a pretty grim environment going down those roads, fairly narrow pavements, fairly broken up, lots of fumes, lots of, you feel quite hemmed in, it's not so a place that people sort of like to go and have spent time outside browsing. So there must be better ways to support the traders there. Clearly, you know, it's become a bit of a, of course, celebrity, this campaign against bus lanes, but let's think in the bigger picture and see if we can do something more positive. As you say, people aren't concerned about climate change. What you didn't say is people are also concerned about air pollution.
Councillor Johnson, we are going to debate this issue, so can you make your quick answers shorter, please?
I can go backwards in time, but yeah, I think Lord Mayor's probably heard this before, but I will wrap up, and that's pretty well everything I need to say. You made some good points, and I'm glad that you do share a lot of the concerns, and let's go from there. I'm sure you'll hear this again in a few minutes.
Thank you. We have another petition, a petition requesting the council to reduce council tax. However, there is no speaker to this petition, so I'm going to ask councillor McDonald to answer this petition in writing. We now move to public questions. May I remind questioners of my earlier statement requesting that they be brief as possible when asking questions, and that the executive members keep their responses short. This is to ensure that as much time as possible is available for all the other items of business on this agenda for today's meeting. Thank you. I call upon Graham Jones, and then it will be Mr. Russell Johnson. So, Mr. Jones, please.
Good afternoon, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about this. I'll read our question out to the meeting. Some residential areas, including Burngrieve outside the city centre, already suffer from illegally high levels of air pollution. The Clean Air Zone is forecast to actually increase pollution on some of Burngrieve Road through the anticipated displacement of polluting vehicles. What immediate steps will the council take to reduce the public health hazard caused by the injustice of deliberately diverting polluting traffic through one of the most disadvantaged areas of the city? Now, when the council introduced its Clean Air Strategy five years ago, it said, "Clean air is an issue of fundamental fairness and basic social justice. It is the poorest and most vulnerable in our city, including the very young and the very old, who are most affected by polluted air, even though these people are almost never the polluters." We are clear that greater equality and cleaner air go hand in hand, and the Clean Air Strategy also promised, "We want clean air for everyone in Sheffield, and we will close the gap between communities with the least and most polluted air." Burny Clean Air Campaign monitors nitrogen dioxide at seven sites in our area, and life expectancy in Burngrieve is 10 years less than in some parts of the city. Organisations as diverse as the Environment Agency and Black Lives Matter recognise that air pollution disproportionately affects ethnic minorities, and some of our nitrogen dioxide results are consistently higher, the most parts of the city centre, that's excluding the taxi rank at the station, but very little anywhere else. And our results are horrifying and often way over the legal maximum. Even in the so-called lockdown year of 2020, three of our sites recorded levels of nitrogen dioxide of 40 or above, that 40 is like the legal maximum, although in turn, 238, the actual World Health Organisation guidelines is 10 for the annual, and we're talking about levels of 50s and 60s regularly. We have received replies, we've made some freedom of information requests regarding the predicted increase in levels of displaced vehicles on our streets around the cabs, and a number of the main roads in Burngrieve are expected to be used by more polluting vehicles as a result of the Clean Air Zone placing an even worse threat to the adult and children who are resident and work and go to school in Burngrieve. And this includes Burngrieve Road, which, connecting Sheffield, has embarrassingly earmarked development as a walking route, so it's one of the most polluted roads in the city, it's going to be developed as a walking route. And the health gap between the richer and poorer areas of the city will actually increase further due to the predicted diversion of vehicles along some of Burngrieve Road. Yeah, the increase in air pollution will affect some of the most disadvantaged parts of the city, as highlighted several times in the council's online consultation in November, and Burngrieve, Tinsley, and Darnall were all mentioned as areas that would suffer from higher levels of air pollution, and all of areas with ethnic minority populations. In contrast, in Bradford, the council particularly sought to include poorer areas in the Clean Air Zone, and theirs is 22.4 square kilometres compared with Sheffield's 2.3 kilometres. So Bradford has got 10 times bigger Clean Air Zone than Sheffield.
Excuse me, Mr. Jones, this is not a question, it's a statement. Can you please get to the question?
Yeah, well, yeah. Basically, I mean, what do local councillors intend to do to improve this worsening of the disparity between the richer areas and poorer areas as regards air pollution? And the answer isn't new buses, because they're not coming out till 2040.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Jones. May I call upon councillor Douglas Johnson, the executive member for climate change, environment, and transport, to respond, please? Environment and Transport, to respond, please.
Thank you. I think the Lord Mayor's trying to cut me off already. Yeah, no, thanks. A really important point to make, because if you look at Fervale, that is precisely why we need to take action on air quality, air pollution in the city. I mean, Fervale has some of the worst levels of air pollution, as you know, because you know the readings there. And it's because it's in a dip, it's very high levels of transport, of, you know, buses, major bus route, a lot of taxis there, a lot of traffic going through, you know, quite a complex set of crossroads. Also has two schools and a hospital and an awful lot of densely packed housing with an awful lot of poor people living in it. And it's actually why I care about air pollution, because it is those people who suffer. I think it's a bit of a misapprehension that the Clean Air Zone is going to make it worse for those people. Better had make it better, that's the whole point. The way, it's the unique geography of Sheffield that means that the inner ring road has been selected to be the sort of, the measurement of where the cameras were excited to enforce the, you know, the charges on vehicles. But the main point about the Clean Air Plan is to upgrade the quality of vehicles we got in the city. And the point about it is, yeah, the charges around the ring road are sort of the enforcement mechanism, but the main thing is to get those grants out to taxis to upgrade, to get those grants out to the bus companies, to get them to upgrade. And actually, it's not going to make, there's some risk that some vans will want to divert and do quite a long detour across the city to avoid a small bit of the ring road. And I'm sure that will happen to some extent at the beginning. Over time, you know, and in the near future, really, that should go down. Because if you think about it, if you think that if the taxis get cleaned up and if the buses get cleaned up, they can't deviate from those routes. Private cars, as you know, aren't being charged. So actually, it's going to be minimal effect. It has been used as an argument for people who don't want to charge vehicles at all and actually would prefer to have no action on Clean Air. But actually, I think we all agree that we do need to take action on Clean Air. It's fair to say that if it had been designed to designing a Clean Air Zone from scratch without government legislation or previous commitments by this council and, you know, obviously more money, we would have done it differently, I certainly would have done it differently. But it's a useful tool, given where we are. If the choice is that or not doing anything, then I definitely want to go for some action to try and, you know, do what we can to improve air pollution in the city. That's it, really.
Thank you. Mr Russell Johnson? Good afternoon. Can you ask your question, please?
I will, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Lord Mayor, members, officers, for this opportunity. It's good to be back. The first one is about the Streets Ahead contract. Now, lest anybody think that this is technical and historic, it is directly relevant to current matters in terms of the inquiry, which is just starting this week, and another area that I won't go into now for brevity. In July of last year, councillor Terry Wood, in this very room, who was chairing the full council, assured me quite categorically that clause 6.38, which is the one which puts 17,500 trees under threat, would be removed from the contract. This, of course, was very welcome. I've since, however, had a communication, a written communication from the leader, saying that this is not in fact the case. So my question is, would the relevant councillor please clarify? And if I have been misled, perhaps an apology would be in order. My second question is about concerns regarding the reputation of this council. Now, I'm going to cite, very briefly, Lord Mayor, three areas which give rise to this concern, themselves separate, but I suggest linked in terms of their effect on the reputation of this organisation. First one is the councillor Iqbal Afair. After a year of investigation of serious allegations against a senior councillor, the committee investigating it said that whilst in agreement that the behaviours under investigation were not-
Mr Russell, these questions that you're now asking-
Could you use my correct name, please?
No, can I, excuse me, I'm speaking to you. You're asking questions that you did not submit to the council.
Yes, I did. Yes.
They're not, we have not seen the last two questions that you've asked. The first one, yes, but not the, that's all we have.
No, no, excuse me, Lord Mayor. And please would you use my correct name when you're addressing a member of the public?
Sorry, Mr Johnson.
I have submitted these. Now, there have been several delays due to bureaucratic-
My point is actually, Mr Johnson, that the person that you want to answer the questions is not here now.
Ah, that's a different issue, Lord Mayor.
Yes, but the leader of the council's had to lead this meeting because his wife's been taken ill. So we haven't got him here to answer the question.
I suggest that in an organisation of this size, with this number of cooperative executive members, surely there would be somebody in a position to answer these questions.
I'm just going to let the leader, Gillian Dutworth, just explain to you that these questions you're now asking have not been submitted as far as we are aware.
I must correct you, Lord Mayor, they were submitted.
Thank you, Mr Johnson. I'm really sorry, but we've only got the one question from you today. If there's been some mix-up, then we will sort that out. But unfortunately, we've only got the one question from you in our pack, so that's the only one that we will answer today.
And you didn't receive the question about private eye?
So that will be councillor Wood who can answer that for you. Thank you.
Which one?
The third question. The question regarding the Streets Ahead contract.
So councillor Wood, would you like to respond to that question, please?
Thank you, Mrs Johnson. I have sent you an email regarding this, which you should have, explaining in detail where we are with this. One of the things I would like to affirm to you is a request you made to myself in May, as I work alongside councillor Douglas Johnson, and we looked at any further treaties. I can confirm that we do that on a regular basis. And the 17,500 will be removed when the solicitors do the amendments to the contract, which you should be pretty quickly. I'll let you know a date for that.
Thank you, Paul. I conclude that I was misled on that occasion, which is a matter of regret, but thank you anyway. I will submit my other questions regarding the council's damaged reputation on a number of issues to the next, for the next opportunity I have.
Thank you for that. Can I call upon Mr Seraphin, please, to ask his question? The next person to ask a question then is Sam Wakeling.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This meeting marks three years since the council declared a climate emergency. To its credit, the council took scientific advice on carbon budgets and yet the changes that that advice would require had not been seen in any policies, actions or public communications from this council. How much more time do senior councillors and officials need? Or does the continuing blah, blah, blah demonstrate they are neither willing nor perhaps competent to act to protect life in Sheffield and around the world? We want to be able to believe our leaders. We want to know that our lives and the lives of our children are valued. We do not consent to sacrificing the poorest around the world to prop up this economic system. So will anyone here offer an apology or demonstrate repentance for this breach of trust? Will the council leadership resign? And when will we get the long-promised Citizens Assembly as one step to begin to repair our shattered democracy? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I call upon councillor Johnson, please, to reply.
Thanks. I'm quite entirely sure why I've been asked to answer this question, if it's due with leadership. I guess the Lord Mayor likes to hear my voice, which is rather nice of her. But seriously, this is, yeah, this is not a time to be resigning. It's not a time to drop leadership on what we are trying to do. Things have changed a lot in the council and in the city. It is true that the climate emergency was something that was formally declared by the council since then. And as you know, people have been working hard to keep pushing the agenda. Just this morning, actually, I was on an interview with a scheme with some national body to try and bring some funding into the city to do this issue about engagement with the public on, talking about climate. And one of the issues that came up there was about the fact that more and more people are now talking about the climate. And of course, I said, well, actually, people talk about the climate all the time, it's just that they don't always think about it in climate terms. The same as air pollution. People, you know, in the general public are concerned about this. And that's something that has been growing. And I know that because I've been out knocking on doors and talking to people for many years now and I've seen how the increase in that has developed over time. There is, of course, no quick fix at a time when we desperately need a quick fix. So that is of concern. So yeah, I don't think it particularly helps us to resign now, for me to do that. I hope we will keep pushing forward with some of the big things. And of course, today, this meeting, we're talking about two of the big things. One of the biggest emitters of carbon is in domestic heating and another of the biggest emitters is in road transport. And already you've heard today, there are plans for a fairly radical transformative approach to public transport and there's lots of reaction about that. Lots of people who, when weighing up the factors of improved public transport and health against individual people's livelihoods and the reaction to it, perhaps don't recognise those things come together. And there's a lot of reaction hostility to something that's only a very outlined proposal. Later on, you'll hear more about, you know, a more radical approach to insulation and aiming for actual net zero, zero consumption homes in large numbers across the city. And I don't want us to take our foot off the accelerator on that, to use a really inappropriate metaphor at this point. But I think we do need to keep on with that. None of these battles are won quickly, but I think we are all coming together in a lot better way than we were a few years ago.
I feel a need to explain, councillor Johnson, that the reason you were asked to answer that question is because you are the Climate Change and Environment and Transport Member.
Why was I not told before?
Has a question. Please come to the microphone, Mr Hughes. Can you please make sure that your questions are a bit shorter than some of the previous ones, please?
I'll do what I can, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this question concerns the disposal of a small piece of unused land owned by the council at Wallshaw Road in the village of Worrell. Developers approached Property and Regeneration Services, asking to buy the land. They wished to purchase it in order to create an access road to a proposed housing development so as to avoid using an alternative that would require the demolition of a historic 18th century farmhouse and barn and impact the setting of listed buildings. The developer had previously been refused planning permission for that demolition, the council indicating clearly that it considered the use of the council's land to be the preferred alternative. The developer did not appeal the decision, but instead sought to buy the land from the council, in line with the council's wishes. The response from Property and Regeneration Services was that they preferred to await the outcome of any appeal the developer might make. This reply was only made two months after the deadline for appeals had passed and it was no longer possible for the developer to appeal, which in any case, they showed no intention of doing, so given. The objective in the council's land and property plan to dispose of surplus land in a timely manner and in the same plan to act as one council and make decisions in the wider interests of the council, the statutory duty under the Planning Listed Buildings and Conservation Areas Act 1990, section 66 of section two, to have regard to the desirability of preserving features of special architectural or historic interest, and in particular listed buildings, in the exercise of powers of disposal, the clear preference of both members and officers and the existence of a ready and willing buyer, will the council immediately enter into negotiations to sell the land? And please, can the council also explain why the developer was invited to make an appeal, a potentially expensive procedure for the council, two months after it was no longer possible for such an appeal to be made? And secondly, how it is possible for a department of the council to act so as effectively to thwart a previous decision by elected members? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr Hughes. Can I call upon councillor McDonald, executive member for Finance and Resources, to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr Hughes. There is quite a complicated series of events to this and I could give you the short or the long version of the briefing and the response that I've had. I think you'd probably prefer the short version. So in selling our land, we need to ensure that we obtain best consideration and that schemes will be built out in a timely manner once planning has been approved. So at the moment, we are in active discussion with the developer about alternative access to the site and sale of the council-owned land. The council will seek to conclude these discussions before determining the correct course of action for the planning application. So we need to do that first before it goes to planning. So thank you very much for bringing your question and I hope we can get this resolved fairly soon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McDonald. This concludes item 4A on the agenda. We now move to item 4B, petitions requiring debate. The council's petition scheme requires that petitions containing over 5,000 signatures from individuals who live, work or study in Sheffield be the subject of debate at the council meeting. Twenty-five minutes is allowed for each such debate. An electronic petition has been received containing 7,148 signatures opposing the plans put forward by connecting Sheffield to extend bus lanes' operating times to 12 hours, remove parking and create red routes on Echolsall Road and Abidale Road. Further details of this position is set out in the council summons. May I call upon Mr Aruuf to come to the... You're there. Sorry, sir.
Sorry, just anticipating you calling me. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and then thank you councillors. I'll try and keep it brief as possible. There's tons to get in because this is going to impact on so many businesses. The discussion items have just gone on and on. First of all, on behalf of the small businesses, I'm here today to present to you a 7,500-strong petition with regards to saying no to red lines and to 12-hour bus lanes and no to the removal of parking spaces that are on Echolsall Road and Abidale Road at this moment in time. We, the petitioners, the people that have organised it, and businesses, are really upset, stressed and angry. We're angry for a number of reasons. The main reasons are, we've got a proposal here that is going to see the end of many businesses. Businesses are going to be so severely impacted by the 12-hour bus lanes and the red lines that are being proposed in this area. Okay? Businesses like mine, the post office, village post offices that have been going for 20 years, 30 years, will now have to close its doors because a Green Council, councillor, has proposed a 12-hour bus lane and red lines all the way along it, which will prevent Royal Mail vans, courier vans, DPD vans and the most vulnerable people within our community from coming to our post office with packages and items to drop them off. As if we didn't have to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic and most small businesses had to close its doors. As if we've not got the financial pressures of our children and our young people to deal with. Now we are having to deal with the incompetency and the ludicrous butchering and murder of local businesses by the Green Party- of local businesses by the Green Party and the Green councillor, Douglas Johnson. The fact that you took a four-hour walk with us in businesses and listened to the businesses and said, "You are listening", and then went to the Sheffield Star and we see the article less than a week ago, "These proposals aren't going to be watered down". Do we mean anything? Do our voices mean anything? What must it take for us to speak out and do it? Seven and a half thousand petition in one, you've got three and a half thousand petition in everywhere else. People are telling you this is a bad idea for businesses. But yet, the council, no business impact assessment, no equality impact assessment, nothing to speak to disabled people, Sheffield Transport for all, not even consulted. Where is the work? Why is the owners being put on a business like us to provide you that data? Why are you not doing due diligence and proportionality when you come up with these proposals? I must ask, while the debate takes place, my plea is to the rest of the councillors in here, I've had the passion of knowing, and I've had the good friendship of knowing a lot of you in here. So I ask you, during this debate, please speak up and raise your voices. We've only got two vibrant streets left in the city, arguably, in the city left that are trading at this moment in time, Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road. Please speak up and protect them. I put everything into my business. I had to change from a taxi driver to a postmaster during the COVID-19 pandemic. I've put all my child's children's savings, inheritance, everything into this business. If this flops for me, that's my life, that's the livelihood of my children. So please, please, I plead with you here today, please stand up against this green proposal. It has to be proportionate and it has to be fair. A 12-hour bus lane and red lines, we are not London. We are the small businesses of Ecclesall Road and London Road. So my final plea to you is please, please take us seriously and please speak up now before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Aruuf, and thank you for that passionate speech. And I'll call upon councillor Johnson to respond, please.
Sure. Thanks, Lord Mayor. Yeah, sure, that's a bit personal, isn't it? I should say, of course, that these proposals always worked up, you know, by a number of professional officers, and I think it's really important to consult with the public. But there we go. And I think I said to one of the earlier petitioners that, you know, I absolutely don't doubt the sincerity of what's on that. And, you know, as you know, Vis did, it was quite helpful to talk to you then. There is always a danger that perhaps people's anger about what might happen takes over. What's really important is that people actually respond to the consultation that's out there. That is the point about it. There's a lot to be said for installing, you know, proper bus routes there. You're right, it is a social justice issue. Still not everyone has the choice of whether they can drive a car or take the bus. You know, many people where I live actually don't have cars. People rely on buses to get to work or pick the kids up from nursery and that. And it's something to balance out about need of access for cars. So that's where we are. I mean, I think it's worth just having a look at what we actually know. So I'll look at the text from the consultation webpage, because that is as far as the proposal's gone. And it says, "We've got some initial ideas about these things. We're seeking your views now to inform a formal consultation in 2022." I mean, bear in mind, this was done last year, 2021. That's it. "And we'll use the outcome of this initial stage of consultation, along with other research, to bring forward options to extend bus lane hours for consultation at a later date." That's where we are, really. So what would be quite useful is if people say, if we put a bus lane here and take out a bit of parking, it means, you know, I can't park outside my shop or whatever. And will you also be able to say, you know, I need a bit of access here to, you know, service the shop, you know, get deliveries in and out? Seems pretty legitimate, sort of thing that's useful to respond to the consultation on. And that's what we've got. And as you know, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about it. There's been a lot of response to the consultation. They're being analysed at the moment. There will be some parking surveys and so on. And when we've got some more information, then maybe we'll be able to make a, you know, a more informed decision, see where this is going, and see what we can do to balance up all the factors there. So that's it, really. So I'm saying it's... Not trying to trivialise what you're saying, but there's no need perhaps to get quite so overblown about it. We'll see where we go. Thank you.
It's my children's livelihood. Why should I not be passionate?
Thank you, thank you. Right. Councillor Tim Huggan, the shadow executive member for Climate Change and Environment and Transport, is not in attendance at this meeting today. So I call upon the leader of the Liberal Democrats' council, the Shafiq Mohammed, to speak on this matter. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And firstly, thank you to all the petitioners for coming here today to present what is a very deeply concerning issue for me. And I want to apologise for the comments of councillor Johnson, totally insensitive. We are talking about predominantly independent shops who could go down. We're not talking about boots. We're not talking about super drug here, who have deep pockets and can sustain the loss of earnings. I just want to point out to colleagues that, just look at your written questions. And my first question to councillor Teddy Fox said it all in terms of councillor Johnson's experiments, in terms of what he tried to do with parking in the city centre. It failed at Christmas, and it's cost traders. It's not cost him, it's cost traders, and that's the problem. For me, I don't want to experiment with your livelihood. Councillor Johnson asked Mr Henderson, "It'd be really useful to know what economic impact might be. Please let us know." My challenge to them is, shouldn't you be doing that job already by finding out what the economic impact might be of your ideas before you go out there and create undue distress to actual business owners who are struggling at the moment? They are struggling with COVID. They are struggling in terms of trying to meet the energy costs and all the others. And on top of that, we're now putting on anxiety. This should be, in my view, if it had come to a cabinet meeting where I was at, I would have said to councillor Johnson, "Go away and do some more work on it." There are bits I like about this, by the way. There are changes, moving the bus stops, et cetera. And I plead to councillor Johnson, get on with those. But when it comes to 12-hour bus lanes, when it comes to those red lines, he has to seriously step back and say, "I've heard you. I walked those streets for four hours. What on earth was he looking at and doing, walking for four hours and still saying, 'I don't intend to water it down'?" Was he really listening to you, or was he just going through the motions because one of his colleagues was dragging him round? Thank you.
Councillor Brian Lodge. I'm so sorry. The next person I'm going to ask to speak is councillor... Oh, you've got a microphone. Councillor Sangar, you won't need it.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It came around rather sooner than I expected there. Thank you. I'd just like to start off and congratulate the petitioner there for the passion and the speech that he demonstrated there that came through. And I think, you know, councillor Johnson started off by turning around and saying, "It's a bit personal", and then proceeded to patronise the petitioner. And I think that's appalling. I think historically, he's spoken about things in the past where he's spoken, he said, "We need to listen to the members of the public." Yes, we do need to listen to the members of the public. That's quite clear. There are a number of people here who are expressing grave concerns about things there. There's a petition that requires debating here, and so we should be doing that. We should be listening to the public. We should be taking on board the comments. Excuse me. Previously, you shouted about this, and previously, it's been very personal coming from members of the Green Party about issues that have been contentious. Because I've stood there and I've taken it. And you know what, councillor Johnson? Being the executive member or the cabinet member says, yes, you are fronting that. And colleagues from the other side and from both sides know and understand that, that if you are the cabinet member, that is part of your role. You are the face of that policy that you are pursuing. So yes, it will appear, it will appear personal when people are coming doing that, but that's part of the role. And I think, you know, we'd be remiss not to listen to the comments that are coming out from people here, from small businesses. And, you know, I congratulate councillor Mohammed for his speech there as well because he was bang right with what he's saying. We need to listen to the businesses. We need to listen to everybody. And there are some good things in there, talking about making things better and improving bus services and improving bus stops and improving junctions. And they're the right things we need to listen to. But we also need to take on board the strength of feeling that is against that. And I think to just dismiss it out of hand is wrong, and you just shouldn't be doing that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Colleagues, you keep putting your hands up, but we have got 10 minutes left on this debate. So I am sharing this between parties. So the next person to speak is councillor Sangar, and after that, it will be councillor Milson. So if you can get the microphone to councillor Sangar.
I will. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to the petitioners. Seven and a half thousand signatures takes a lot of doing. I know when Mr Arav took myself and the leader of the council and other colleagues round Ecclesall Road, the strength of feeling of traders. And I also know the importance of both of Eki Road and of Abidale Road in terms of the shopping history, but also the shopping present and the shopping future. As my colleague has already said, a lot of these are independents. They're people who have put their money, their life savings into these shops, and they've had a tough time in these two years of the pandemic. Now, what we need to do is we need to work with them to make sure that Ecclesall Road and Abidale Road continue as thriving shopping centres. And we don't do that by putting in 12-hour bus lanes. We need to get away, Lord Mayor, we need to get away as a council from this top-down approach. We need to start with local people, local businesses. That's what the lacks are about. We're very supportive of that, that idea of working with people, working with businesses. We need, Lord Mayor, we need to listen to what the local people are saying, what the local businesses are saying, and not have these red routes. It's clearly not appropriate in Sheffield. Thousands of people have signed petitions saying this is not the way forward. So, Lord Mayor, what I urge us to do is to take the 12-hour bus lanes off the table, work with the things that people are agreeing with, moving the bus stops, and then we can go back to the bus companies and get a better bus service. Because that's, at the end of the day, how we're going to get people back on buses, by having a better bus service, not by putting in unwanted 12-hour bus lanes. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Milson, can you be as quick as you can? Because everybody wants to speak on this issue.
Is this working? Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to the petitioners for bringing this really important issue forward. Petitions should not have been necessary. This debate should not be necessary. Business owners should not have suffered this alarm and anxiety. All councillor Johnson needed to do was communicate meaningfully with businesses before releasing initial proposals publicly, to let them know that 12-hour bus lanes are only an idea at this stage, one that has to be included in initial information gathering consultation to meet the government criteria, to offer reassurance that the public's response to this first consultation will determine what goes forward to form the final plans. Lessons must be learnt here about communicating humanly with citizens. There's absolutely no doubt that as a population, we must collectively make big changes to how we move around. But when authorities are asking people to change their habits, they must first understand their needs, and they must ensure that viable alternatives are readily available. Bus services in Sheffield and beyond are currently inadequate, and this is widely acknowledged. For many people, cycling is simply not an option. For hundreds of businesses, preventing customer parking now would damage them beyond recovery. Sheffield Green Party published a blog last December when it was already becoming clear how unpopular the idea of 12-hour bus lanes would be. And I quote from that blog, "Any individual or family who owns a car makes a decision about whether they go by car every time they make a journey. It's not that simple. There has to be a viable alternative." For some, the decision to go by car is not an alternative to cycling. For some, the decision is to go by car or not to go at all. Failure to acknowledge the reality of this status quo is dangerous. It risks punishing a lot of people unnecessarily and quite simply making life harder for them. In pursuing a green transition, we must not leave anybody...
Thank you, councillor Milson. I have to stop you. I'm sorry, there isn't enough time.
...leave anybody behind.
Councillor Turpin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome this engagement from the public, and I hope we can get through this together. It reminds me, a number of years ago, I was doing some work in a former Lib Dem councillor's house, and he had a quote mounted on the wall, "If things are to stay the same, things will have to change." The changes to roads seem to be the most contentious of all changes within the council's power. But if we want better public transport, buses and taxis, then changes must take place. People often argue against road changes citing poor public transport, meaning there is no alternative. Well, this change is one that will significantly improve it. It will improve connectivity and reliability. It will improve air quality. It will improve safety for cyclists. It will make walking a much more pleasant experience and will encourage that essential footfall that businesses need. I don't believe statements predicting business closures due to 12-hour bus lanes have an evidence base. And I find Labour and Lib Dem members whipping up anxieties disappointing and distasteful. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, basically, it frustrates me quite often and aggrieves me that many times that I've been contacted by businesses, they've said that this council is anti-business. And I think what we're proposing here is clearly something that is anti-business. Let me finish. In terms of Ecclesall Road, it was already a challenging environment. The number of boards that were going up on Ecclesall Road to let was increasing year on year. And this has only been exacerbated by the fact that this has been proposed. Let me give you an example, councillor Turpin, in terms of how much it actually costs a business to be running. A small business on Ecclesall Road, the rent will be around about £20,000 to £25,000. The rates will be about £12,500. The utility costs are around about £5,000 or £6,000. And on top of that, there'll be employee costs as well. So before people like Nasirov will make any money on Ecclesall Road, they've had to expend in the region of nearly £60,000 to £70,000. And that's before encountering the challenging environment of the retail industry, which has been online, which these people have to suffer from. Investors, I do know, are already disinvesting from Ecclesall Road. And I can't imagine it'd be very long before the tenants also start to hand in their keys as well. And this basically doesn't need to happen. We need to be aware that these people have got livelihoods, money spent in these businesses. And let me move to Abidale Road. Abidale Road was seeing green shoots of recovery. This has basically killed it. It will not thrive as we need it to thrive. I have been contacted by a number of operators, they're independent shops, who are clearly saying to me, they're reliant on people parking outside their shops, hairdressers, people like that. And when they're not being able to do that, what they will do is turn around, close those shops, and we are creating ghettos of the future. I do agree that we need to do something about the global environment.
Thank you, councillor Marouf. Your time's up. Councillor Chin Chen. And then councillor Coombe will be next. So can we have a microphone there, and then one over here, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to the petitioners as well. I strongly oppose the proposal to increase the bus lane hours on Ecclesall Road and Abidale Road. Having bus lanes in operation for 12 hours a day will make it more difficult for potential customers to park, more difficult for workers to park, and more difficult for loading. As a council, we need to be doing all we can to support local businesses, now more than ever, given the hit to our local economy during the pandemic, which is still going on. We need to be working with businesses, not against them. I also think these proposals are completely unnecessary. I'm not convinced that increasing bus lane hours is going to lead to much faster bus times because the bus lanes are already in operation during the most congested periods of the day. I'm therefore struggling to see any major benefits of the proposals. But what I can see is potential significant damage to local businesses. I do support many of the other connecting Sheffield proposals. But I feel we need to do all we can to support thriving areas of the city, and that includes... do all we can to support thriving areas of the city, and that includes areas like Abidale Road and Ecsor Road outside the city centre. Many businesses on Ecsor Road and Abidale Road are clearly, have strong concerns about this, which is completely understandable. And I think as a council, we need to listen to them and not go ahead with these particular proposals from the Connecting Sheffield plans. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Finally. Councillor Kyle, can you...
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to be very brief, Lord Mayor, because as already been said. First of all, can I thank the petitioners for bringing this to this council meeting? I think it's a very, very important issue that rightly deserves the debate that is getting today. I think the running theme chair is definitely here, listen to these people, listen to what they're saying. I think when Nasirouf spoke very passionately, I do believe that he was speaking for many of those businesses along those two corridors, not just for himself. So I think it's really, really important that we listen to what they're saying. We've heard about the massive detrimental impact on all these businesses of this initiative. And I think it's really important that we need to allow a robust consultation process to complete, to be concluded, and then really sort through, strategy developed before anything is implemented. I don't know where this has come from about that it's not going to be watered down, because I think it's important that we have to allow the consultation to be concluded first before any decision is taken. But I seriously think that it's very, very important that we listen to these people. These obviously are very, very difficult times for businesses. They've had a massive, already suffered massively because of the pandemic, they're only just about becoming live again, and we don't want to be making this initiative the final nail in the coffin for these businesses. We need to support these businesses. We need to listen to what they're saying. And I don't want to undermine the measures taken to tackle climate change, but we don't want to be tackling one at the expense of the other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Marouf? Sorry. I think this is your maiden speech? Right, well, we'll be very kind to you this time. Enjoy it, because it won't last.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the petitioners who have spoken today and put their name to this petition. First, I'd like to remind the lovely postmaster from Ecsor Road who spoke today that roll mail vans would still be allowed to deliver on red lines, something he should be very much aware of. Anyway, I firmly believe an increase in bus lane timings is a fantastic idea, even if it would negatively impact upon me. The current timings for most bus lanes across the city are disgustingly poor, and these most certainly do need to increase. I disagree with councillor Chin Chen that bus lanes are in operation at already busy times. In fact, they are not. Maybe he would like to take a visit to Ecsor Road or the great Abidale Road at 3pm and tell me it's not a busy time. However, having said that, I do want to say that I do not fully agree with the extent to which the current proposals go for Ecsor Road and Abidale Road. It is far too great an increase, far too quickly. Instead, my proposal would be to increase all bus lane timings throughout the city from the current weekday total of four and a half hours to seven hours, whereby the morning peak would be from 7 o'clock to 10 o'clock, and the evening peak would be from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock. I will finish off by reminding all that this was an initial consultation, and no decisions have been taken on the future timings of bus lanes. I and my Green colleagues will continue to listen to the concerns of constituents throughout this great city, and will continue to encourage all to continue giving their views so we can make informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't switch my microphone. I know I shout loud, but you know. Can I ask the petitioner, Mr Rahouf, to respond, please? You have three minutes.
First of all, please let me apologize to councillor Johnson for getting personal. I'm really sorry, on behalf of those disabled people that come into my post office for the last two to three weeks, last month or so, that have been upset that they might not get to my post office, but I will apologize on behalf of them. I'll also apologize on behalf of my children, whose money I've had to dig into their bank accounts and take that money out to invest in a business. I'm sorry for changing profession during the pandemic. I'm sorry for not jumping onto the welfare state and jumping onto the benefits. So I apologize sincerely. Councillor Turpin, where is your business impact assessment, man? You're a councillor, you're a director for another company. Where is your business impact assessment? To prove what you're actually asserting, you've actually made an assertion today that there will be no impact, and this has been drummed up by Labour and the Liberal Democrats. What have you drummed up in support of, to show what we've done? Have you done any sort of impact assessment at all? There is no reality here. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart to people like councillor Lodge, people like councillor Shafak, and councillor Sangar, and councillor Milson, and councillor Lewis, that have actually supported and actually shown some support and actually stood up and said it how it is. This is going to be the end to our businesses, like it or not. We have done the research as businesses, and we're telling you this is what it's going to be. Councillor Raf, roll mail vans, there's 16 different courier companies that deliver to a post office, man. Come on, you've got to get out and you've got to see the businesses. You've got to understand how they work. Is there an exemption for every single one of them? No, there isn't. There is people that cannot still park on double yellows and do the loading now. Roll mail vans have to park illegally to load at our post office at this moment in time. So please familiarize yourselves with the rules and regulations, because it's my job to, and I have. What I will say finally, though, is it's very disappointing to still hear from the councillors of the Green Party, still justifications for how to do it, and to extend it to a seven hours. It's not going to work, Raf. It's not going to work to the Green Party. And I would urge you, in the most strongest terms, to please reconsider, not just for the sake of the businesses, you don't want empty shops, but also for our children and our young people as well, whose money, for example, I've invested in. There'll be loads more, sandwich shops, off licenses, the hair and nail beauty industry, the massage industry that you've heard from today. These are small businesses. The big businesses will be protected by this, because your Tesco's, your Marks and Spencer's, they've got their own parking. But the small businesses have no parking at this moment in time, very little. And if you're going to take that away from them, you might as well put down the shutters, lock up, and that'll be the end of it. Thank you to those who have supported me, and reconsider, please. Please, to the Green Party.
Point of order, Lord Mayor, please.
I'm sorry.
May I raise a point of order, please?
No, I'm going to raise one. Thank you for your passionate speech, sir. I did not believe councillor Teal that that was abusive. That was passion, and there's nothing wrong with someone coming here and having passion.
I'm disgusted that we are enabling a member of the public to abuse a councillor and the other councillors supporting that.
In my opinion, councillor Teal, there was no abuse in that speech. It was passion. Please, councillors, I'm chairing this meeting. I saw that speech as passionate and not abusive, and that is the end of the matter. Councillor Johnson, you are the executive member for Climate Change, Environment and Transport, and you can now speak for two minutes and respond.
Thank you. Only a couple of further points in reply.
I'm sorry, councillor Johnson, I'm also getting passionate. May I remind you of a course of action that is available? That's what I'm asking you to do. I need to remind you that you need to tell us today what your course of action will be based on the nature of the petitioner.
Yeah, sorry, what else am I to say? It's fairly damning of the council that we don't recognize a consultation when it jumps us and bites in the face. You know, and I have to ask, you know, members over here, which bit of, you know, we are seeking your views do we not understand? However, to deal with that, because there is a consultation, that there's lots of responses come in, there's no report that's come out of that yet, it's been consulted, then probably helpful if we can refer Melissa's petition formally to me as the executive member, and that way you can guarantee it will go into the consultation. So I suppose I propose that as a way forward.
I have an alternative. I want what used to be the cabinet, is now called the executive, where there's only three Green councillors, but seven Labour councillors. I want this petition and the comments to go there. So that's my proposal, and I'm sure I'm going to get a second. Where is Roger? There you go. Councillor Roger Davidson.
Councillor Johnson's motion. Can we have a second for that, please?
Lord Mayor, can I seek some clarification, please? No, no, no. Can I seek clarification from the monitoring officer? I thought this isn't a decision. We haven't made a decision about it yet. So I'd like your advice in terms of then whether the options that have been made out by the Lord Mayor are the ones that we should be deciding on today. Because you can't send something to scrutiny if a decision's not been made on it, for example. I mean, I really want us to listen to the consultation. Do not get me wrong, I'm just asking for advice on process at this point in the meeting.
Yeah, so for a debated petition, you've got three outcomes. It's the same, it's the same, yeah. And I think the point you made from councillor McDonald is because this matter has not yet been decided, then what we will get is this petition would be considered at the point in time when the decision is being taken, rather than something that's done separately. Does that make sense? What are the three options? Good question, councillor. It's no further action, refer the matter to the executive, and that could be either the executive member or the cooperative executive, or refer to scrutiny?
Listen, I'll just...
Lord Mayor, we've got two proposals. Let's put it to the vote.
I'm getting there, councillor Mohammed. Just give me a second, please.
Zach, can you hear me? It's just if someone could clarify for me what we could possibly send to scrutiny. And would it be possible, because there's been a certain number of complaints, shall we say, in the way that the scrutiny, the consultation process has taken place, and the manner in which it's been dealt with prior and during the consultation? Could not that process of consultation with the public be the subject of a scrutiny exercise as well? Because there are clearly, in my view, a number of people who are deeply unhappy with the way that it's being handled.
Thank you, councillor Rooney.
Yes, sorry, Lord Mayor. So the options, noting the petition and taking no further action, taking an alternative action, or referring the petition to an appropriate body or individual for consideration. So the point that councillor Rooney is making is that if there's no decision on this, how can it be referred to scrutiny? I think scrutiny can look at it and take into consideration the matters that are going to be taken forward for a decision, and what that would do would just contribute to the matter. So eventually, it has to go to the executive for a decision. Whether it's debated at scrutiny before it goes to the executive or not is a matter for consideration by you now, but alternatively, you can just send it to the cooperative executive. Does that make sense?
From the point of view of Labour Group, we'll be supporting having a discussion of the cooperative executive, which doesn't preclude the individual executive member from having his say on that issue. And neither does it preclude scrutiny from having a discussion about the process as well. So that's what we'll be supporting, Lord Mayor. It's not an alternative.
We've got a proposal in councillor Johnson. Can you tell me who's going to second that, please? Councillor Johnson, do you want to re-say what you said? I'm sorry, and then we can... Can you tell us, councillor Johnson, what your proposal is from today? And then we can have a vote on the two options. No, Mazza, councillor.
Point of order, please, Lord Mayor.
Absolutely. We've just had a proposal, and I'm asking for a second. And I'm presuming it's councillor Turpin that's going to second it, because you said so, didn't you? So that's on the table, so we're going to vote.
Lord Mayor, can we have a recorded vote, please?
You're going to change your mind? Does everybody understand what's happening?
Lord Mayor, can I...
Councillor Shafak, can you please repeat your proposal?
Yes, so my proposal, seconded by councillor Roger Davidson, is to send this petition and the comments to the executive, i.e. all 10 of what used to be the cabinet. And I think, Lord Mayor, that's where most of the councillors are in agreement, so let's just put it to the vote. It's nearly four o'clock, there's other things to do.
Okay, can we all vote? All those in favour? Wow, thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried. I'm thinking that this may be a time to have a comfort break, just for 10 minutes. Yeah, that's another word for it. Yeah. If there are any questions that can't be asked by councillor McDonald because the leader of the council's not here, then we will make sure that you've got answers to your supplementary questions so you can ask them. So mine, it's not got numbers on, but we'll go to the first page. Oh, sorry. Sorry, folks. Are there any questions? There are no questions on urgent business. Or I should say, are there any questions of urgent business? Questions on joint authority. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council to ask a question on the discharge of functions of the South Yorkshire Joint Authority's fire and rescue and pensions. I believe councillor Phipps, you have a question? Councillor Phipps has given in an advance notice of a question relating to South Yorkshire Pensions Authority. This was enabled, sorry, this has enabled councillor Wetherall, the council spokesperson on pensions, to provide a written response and copies of the question and response have been circulated at this meeting. Okay. Are there any other questions related to the pensions or fire and rescue authority? Councillor Phipps, have you got? You've got no questions? We'll now move then to members' supplementary questions. We're now on supplementary... We're now on supplementary questions, written answers from the executive members to answer submitted by members in advance of this meeting have been emailed to all members and circulated at the meeting. And this item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council who have submitted a question to ask a supplementary question. So my copy has not got any page numbers on, so we'll try and get through this. So the first page, councillor Shafak Mohammed, have you got any questions?
councillor Fox is not here, so I'm not really sure whether we ought to just pass on those, well I will anyway on this one, and I wish him well actually.
Okay, thank you. Question on the other page, councillor Marouf? Have you got a supplementary question?
No, thank you.
councillor Colin Ross?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just very briefly, I've got some very clear answers, they will be published. In advance of this meeting, I tried to find, using the council's website, exactly where I would find the answers to these questions, and found it very difficult. So I'd recommend that you were actually looking to attach it to these responses to the minutes of these council meetings as an easy point of reference, rather than somewhere else hidden away on the website. We've just seen with the petitions and members' questions, just how important it is that they get the satisfactory responses, they're seeing, their responses are seen to be acknowledged, and we as other members see what responses have been given as well. So I would urge to make it very easy to find these answers from the December meeting, and put them as attachment to the council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ross. Moving on to councillors Martin Smith, have you got a supplementary question?
No, thanks, Lord Mayor.
I'm having to go through individual questions because there's no page numbers. councillor Masters, have you got a supplementary question? No. Councillor Shafak Mohammed, have you got a supplementary question to councillor Iqbal?
Because his answer is to councillor Turpin, so I really can't quiz him kind of.
Yeah, I've got an answer to that question as well in my section.
Yeah, yeah, please.
I can't give you the page number unfortunately. Yeah, so I was asked, I don't, I assume that they're not all the same questions, but it was all about the data on businesses in Sheffield eligibility for the hospitality and leisure grant scheme. Perhaps that's what councillor Smith or whoever it was was asking that question, can look at that one, look at those answers? Was there a supplementary on that? Is further on?
No, thank you.
I'm disappointed because I actually had a really nice list of things that the service have done.
Well, if you insist.
I'll give it to you later.
I have updated figures from this morning as well, so let's hope we get to that page, Shafak.
I'm a bit confused because I don't know where we are now. I think, I think it's councillor Little.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, but similar questions were asked of three of us.
Don't worry. Did you have a supplementary question councillor Little? Stand up please and ask your question.
I was hoping Shafak Mohammed would be here? Oh, sorry, Mazur Iqbal.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realise.
He's not here.
councillor Iqbal has, is just doing an interview about the levelling up agenda with ITN.
Perhaps councillor Little, when he comes back in, we can go back to his questions, would that be fair?
If not, then we'll get them to you in writing.
If he comes back in time, I'll give you that opportunity to ask a supplementary question.
Thank you.
So we'll just keep moving on. councillor Shafak Mohammed, you've asked a question to councillor Johnson.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. The answer's a question to councillor Johnson, so given that you're saying the bus will be operational in 2023, are you confirming that this will, the costing of this will not be in this year's budget, that we're going to be passing in the next five, six weeks?
That is a logical conclusion, yes, yeah, September 2023 is next year, isn't it?
councillor Richard Shaw, have you got a supplementary question to councillor Johnson? Please stand up and have a got a microphone please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillor Johnson for your answers on question one, Lord Mayor. A constituent who lives next to the junction has not, since 2018, has recorded 37 collisions, including last Saturday where three cars were involved in a collision at this junction. Would you be willing to attend a site visit with me and other ward councillors to look at this issue and try and resolve it sooner rather than later? Because it certainly seems to be warranted a higher priority, given that higher number of collisions, higher number of collisions.
councillor Johnson?
Thanks, might have to ask officers first. If I promise to come and do a site visit, which I've no problem with doing in principle, trying to fit it in might be difficult, and it might mean it never happens, so let me ask the office and just see where we are, and maybe we could link up afterwards with the up-to-date data too.
Thank you, I have a supplementary on question two, Lord Mayor? Well, 2A. I'm afraid the formatting seems to have gone awry at some point since I submitted the question, because I was asking not for the total number of cycle stands in the city, but at the council housing and neighbourhood offices. Would you be able to provide the answer to that in writing please?
Yeah, good idea, yeah, I'll have to ask, thank you.
Thank you.
councillor Richard Williams, I'm sorry I missed you out, have you got a supplementary question to councillor Johnson? Can we have a microphone please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think we all recognise that getting people out of cars is fundamental to the neutral carbon zero targets, and getting them out of cars requires a decent, fit-for-service public transport system. But it's also part of people's day-to-day life, they need to go to work, to school, to doctors, et cetera. This is true across Sheffield, and it is particularly the case for residents in the Stanington Ward. On that basis, I noticed the answers from councillor Johnson, and it is good to see that some actions are being taken. However, my question to the councillor is, when will Stanington Ward and Sheffield residents start seeing outcomes, seeing changes, and seeing improvements?
I guess that's a bit of an open-ended question, it'd be nice to see improvements as soon as possible and ongoing. I will say it's a bit of a labour though to make this move through the current bus service improvement plan, I'll do what I can to make the move, I will say as you appreciate, there's quite a lot of reaction to buses moving today.
Thank you. councillor Phipps, have you got a supplementary question? No? Inchen, have you got a supplementary question to councillor Johnson? Can we have a microphone please? Very much your show, councillor.
Thank you councillor Johnson for your response. Would you be able to look into whether the council can make an application to the on-street charging scheme? Because I am conscious that Sheffield is falling behind on on-street electric car charging in particular, and although I do recognise the challenges in there, these schemes are set up to help deal with those challenges, so please could councillor Johnson look into that, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, I mean, actually, out of interest, the question that you've just asked now is one that I myself asked of the relevant cabinet member probably four or five years ago, on the face of it, there's this fund there, why are we not making more use of that? And actually, when you look at the way that it's been set up by government, it's not particularly beneficial to authorities like us that are quite cash-strapped, it's much more beneficial to those authorities that have got a lot more spending power available to them, and that's the reality, I'm afraid.
Thank you councillor Johnson.
It is, yes, fully enough.
Excuse me, thank you. We're going to go back to the questions, supplementary questions for councillor Mazur Iqbal now has returned, so Shafak Mohammed, you have a supplementary question? Okay. Yeah, but I'll just check in, because there's councillor Martin Smith, have you got a supplementary question?
Not to councillor Iqbal, thank you.
councillor Little, this is your chance to ask your question, please.
Thank you, thank you for your response Mazur Iqbal. My question was about giving the go-ahead to a multi-storey car park of 470 cars, and with five spaces for cycles. At what point do we as a city respond to an emergency? So much of this is, we're continuing in the same ridiculous direction because of prior agreements. Well, we've actually declared an climate emergency, which we're trying to get to, and yet this seems to fly in the face of that strong commitment from both the Lib Dems and Labour Party in this city to get to. So 470 cars extra will be coming into the city, is this a good decision?
councillor Iqbal?
I mean, there was a number of questions, I thought the questions that have just been posed again have been answered, and if I refer councillor Little through you, Lord Mayor, there's the one-year plan and the work that is ongoing around this authority's commitment to meeting them targets, and as it says in the report, and it's on the agenda today, we've now gotten an agreement to move forward with the local plan. Hopefully, that's another tool for us to address the challenges we face. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Phipps, did you want to ask a supplementary question? councillor Thornton, have you got a supplementary question to councillor Lindis Hammond?
Thank you for your answer on this, and I'm more than happy to have an answer on this one in writing if you don't have these figures to hand. But once a young disabled person reaches 18, their benefits change from PIP to PIP and disability allowance. Do we have any figures on the length of time waiting from application to receiving this? Because parents in this city are reporting with children now 20, they've been waiting two years to receive their benefits, so what are we doing to support these people? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thornton, that's, obviously I can get you in writing, just so you know, I don't think that probably falls within my portfolio, the question you asked, but I'm very happy to pick it up and seek the answer in my behalf, that's not a problem, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Martin Smith, you've asked a question of councillor McDonald, have you got a supplementary question?
A very comprehensive answer, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Lord Mayor?
Okay councillor Iris, sorry.
Yes, can I thank councillor Lindis Hammond for his reply to my questions regarding the hidden fees issue, the Panorama programme highlighted in December of some leading care home providers using up to 20% of private fees just to service corporate debt. Could I ask for clarification on his answer to my first question, A1, where he lists those care homes in Sheffield run by Four Seasons and by HC1? Could he confirm whether or not Care UK operate any care homes in the city, and if so, which? And then I have a supplementary question on question, on his answer two.
I simply asked the list and they received it, but if you think that there is one we're missing on the list, I shall double-check and get you the answer to the rest.
It was just clarifying, it was just that it says Care UK, whereas the others have got specific homes, there's nothing there, it doesn't say none, or it doesn't actually answer the question.
Check that just to reassure you.
Okay, thank you for that. And on his answer to question two, where he mentions the minimal monitoring done historically, is any monitoring done by the CQC on the level of private fees providers charge that might inform the council's current fees consultation, he mentions, for when the council is able to contract on behalf of self-thunders?
I'm not aware of what the CQC do around care fees actually, I mean, it's a good point, I think more widely, I think your question two and three are really interesting. I think what I'd say is personally, I think the council could do a lot more to support private purchasing of care where that happens, but what the government have to realise is we need to be funded to do that work and support people. You know, the teams that do this are really pulled out, you know, looking after council commissioned care, I think we could do a really good job for the people of Sheffield if the government were prepared to support councils, to act in that wider way as that market shaper. They don't, but I'm really happy to look at this in more detail with you.
councillor Shafak Mohammed, do you have a supplementary question to councillor Teal?
I have several, Lord Mayor. The first is on, well, question one to councillor Teal, in essence about the climate emergency. When is an emergency for the Greens? Because this motion was passed last summer, and you are now telling us here in February that you're looking at drafting a natural emergency action plan. So what's actually happened in the last six, seven months since we declared that emergency, councillor Teal?
Thank you councillor Mohammed, I assume you're referring to the nature emergency? I've been on many site visits to see work that's already ongoing with our partners, for example, people like Sheffield Rotherham Wildlife Trust, and yeah, there are many good projects happening, but of course, we do need to draft an actual nature emergency action plan, and this has impacted on, as you can see from the response by various pieces of legislation that's coming in and expected. Of course, this legislation will hopefully bring with it funding as well, and so that's why it's taking so long, there's just a lot of action going on in this space with central government and staff, officers are responding as quickly as they can and trying to prepare ahead of that legislation as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question three, this stems from councillor Teal, a question by a member of the public from the Encliff Greystones area to our last LAC meeting, around this policy of one size for the entire city. Each park in this city is different in size and character, and my plea to you would be, would it be better for decisions such as how large a group of people can operate, for example in Encliff Park, is left to more localised decision through the LAC, as opposed to the cabinet member, or sorry, the executive member doing it? Because clearly 30 in Encliff Park is still a small group in comparison to maybe a small pocket park elsewhere in the city.
Thank you councillor Mohammed, you raise an interesting idea, and I think it would be something we could take up and discuss outside of this meeting if you'd like to, I think that sounds like a possibility of something worth exploring, thank you.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, just to come in, could we arrange to meet the residents in question, councillor Teal, on-site?
Yeah, I'd be very happy to do that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Teal. Have you got another question councillor Mohammed?
Yeah, it's in relation to question four about the CTV cameras that are on-site but don't actually work, and you say work is underway to review... And you say work is underway to review issues on these systems. Do you have a timetable? How serious is the problem? Are we talking small fix done in a week or two? Or are we talking about a long-term problem here that might take months?
Thank you, councillor Mohammed. Apologies, I don't have any more detail than the answer gives, but I can certainly ask officers to get back to you with greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Teal. Councillor Sophie Thornton, have you got a supplementary question to ask?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As until you said about how the majority of the cameras on the housing office are internal. My colleague councillor Shaw lives just around the corner, and this morning counted six external cameras at the housing office on poles that all have really good and clear vision of the shots at Jordan Thorpe, where over the last few years there have been a shop ran-raided, a firework attack on a child in a pram, and a knife amnesty bin has been raided. Once again, will you reconsider updating the CCTV, which is primarily located on a public building in the area, to help residents of Jordan Thorpe and Batemore feel safer? In addition, I'd like to refer to your earlier attempt to say that a member of the public was abusive when he was passionately defending his livelihood. Perhaps, you know, you might want to look to your own party, as members of your own party were laughing at Mr Aruff. But also, every meeting, for example, councillor Johnson has continued to condescend and patronise members of the public. May I suggest that respect and good treatment goes both ways? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thornton. I think that the answer's very clear regarding the cameras and the rest. I don't think I'm inclined to answer. Thank you.
Councillor Joe Otten, have you got a supplementary question? Councillor Masters, have you got a supplementary question?
Thank you for your answer about electric power sources for the children's rides in the two parks. They clearly predate the current investigations into how they can be, fresh ones can be installed in the parks now. So how are they paid for? I mean, can we learn something from them, where they are and all the rest of it? Because that's just a very bold statement.
Thank you, councillor Masters. I'm going to make an assumption here that they're partially paid for by the people that are actually using them as part of the licensing agreement. I would assume that's the case, but I'll have to get officers to check that.
Yes, please, because obviously that could well impact on what the current proposals are going to go now. And the second thing is, in your answer to, we are in the process of developing the plans, right, now, the communication from Parks and Countryside strongly implied that these power points were installed as a consequence of these investigations. So would you please ensure that future communications from Parks and Countryside make clear this is not part of the result of the current process, looking at fresh power points? Because I think that's misleading. Thank you.
I think that's just a yes, is it?
It was a statement rather than a question. Thank you, councillor Masters.
Councillor Shafak Mohammed, do you want to ask a supplementary question? No? And it's, do you want to ask, want to councillor Wood? No? Councillor Thornton, you've asked a question to councillor Wood. Have you got a supplementary question? No? Councillor Martin Smith, have you got a supplementary question to councillor Wood?
Yes, please, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your answer, councillor Wood. Twelve incidents of flight-tipping asbestos is 12 too many, I'm sure we all agree. It's an incredibly dangerous material that needs to be cleared up as soon as possible, particularly if the asbestos has been deposited in an area that's easily accessible to members of the public. There is a current example of that being dealt with by environmental services in my ward. The asbestos is very close to residents' gardens. I won't, for reasons of confidentiality, give more details here, but could you please contact environmental services and ensure this is resolved as quickly as possible and that waste material is taken away in a safe manner as quickly as humanly possible? Thank you.
If you'd like to send me an email tonight, councillor McDonald will be in the morning.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Councillor Ian Ophlin, have you got a supplementary question for councillor Wood?
Consider whether Echolsfield is the best spot across the city, if you haven't done that already, for collecting these materials. Wonderful part of the world, I'm sure, bit of a trek from my neck of the woods and for others roundabout. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I agree entirely with you. I think we need to make sure they can be collected more locally. I will definitely look into that for you.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Councillor Diamond, have you got a supplementary question?
Thank you, councillor Wood, for the response, and great to have you back here again. Can you confirm that emergency services and the council will be notified of any fires in communal areas, finer alarm system under these plans outlined in the question? And this need not conflict with the state put policy? I'm happy to receive your response in writing.
I'll get that, councillor, it'll be done in the next week.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Councillor Clement Jones, have you, seeing as councillor Grocott's not here, you can still ask a question. I'm sure that councillor McDonald will do her best to answer.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Donald. And thank you for the answers on the staffing of the local area committees. From the staffing, it is noted that some local committees are more equal than others in, and some have two community services officers and some only have one community services officer. I'm wondering who made that decision, why that decision was made, and does councillor McDonald think that's fair? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, councillor Clement Jones. The allocation is made for operational reasons, and if there were a change in those operational situations, there's no reason why the allocation wouldn't be adapted accordingly.
Thank you. That's the end of supplementary questions. I shall now move on to the next item of business. Item number six, housing revenue account business plan and budget 2022/23. There is a maximum time of 25 minutes for this item. This item of business is to approve a housing revenue account business plan and budget for 2022/23. At its meeting on the 19th of January 2022, the cooperative executive made this recommendation for consideration by the council today. And those recommendations are set out in the report of the executive director place, which was published with this agenda for this meeting. There are two proposed amendments to be considered. The motion to approve the recommendations made by the cooperative executive at its meeting held on the 19th of January 2022 in relation to housing revenue business plan and budget 2022/23 is to be moved by councillor Kate McDonald and seconded by councillor Paul Wood. May I call upon councillor McDonald to move the motion? You can speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm having a busy day today. I take great pleasure in moving the housing revenue account business plan, together with the recommendations in the covering report. Overall, this shows our tenants and residents how we will invest in our housing stock over the next five years, and this is an ambitious plan. It shows that we're spending £650 million on the largest housing programme the city has seen since Labour's decent homes programme. It also shows that we will be building 3,100 much-needed new council homes by 2013, and I am proud of that, as well as investing over £300 million on major improvements to existing council homes. This is good news for our tenants. As a local councillor, I'm excited about the potential impact of the investment in this plan for my ward. This investment plan will help us deliver the Gleedless Valley master plan, new homes, remodelled housing, major improvements to housing throughout the estate, and a boost to local employment and training. As well as investing in housing, the HRA is also about investing in people, creating thousands of apprenticeships and jobs in Sheffield. And it's also about delivering clean growth and tackling the climate emergency. Our HRA will deliver better energy efficiency to keep our homes warmer and energy bills down. Over the period of this plan, we will also be seeking to attract essential funding to help achieve our ambition of net zero by 2030. So I'm proud to move this motion, and I will be supporting also the Labour amendment to it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McDonald. Can I now call upon councillor Wood to second the motion? You may speak up to two minutes.
I have a lot of pride in being able to second this motion, but firstly, I would like to thank all of the council staff who have put so much hard work into getting it into the position we're in at the moment. The investment in a very difficult time was to show that we can achieve the housing growth we've set out in the previous year, as well as the improvements to the housing stock. And hopefully, we will also see some massive improvements in the repair service with the additional investment and the work going into that. So I'm really pleased to be able to second this, Lord Mayor. Would I do again thank all the council officers who have put so much work in to achieving what we've done this year? Thank you.
Wood? There are two proposed amendments, and these are number one and two on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. This list of amendments was circulated by email to all members yesterday evening and has been published on the website with the agenda for this meeting. Can I call upon councillor Mark Jones, please, to move amendment number one?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to welcome the report and appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this report and our housing as we need to move forward. There is massive need for investment, as none of us would deny. We all recognise the challenging circumstances we've been in. The last two years have been really challenging for our staff to deliver the improvements to our housing stock as we want in a safe manner that both keeps our staff safe and our tenants safe. However, I do want to see more investment carried forward rapidly in terms of how we can insulate our homes. We are seeing massive issues and insecurity in heating of homes. The cost of heating homes is going up through the roof significantly. The international circumstances in which we find ourselves living today with the resurgence of Russia and its gas pipes and the insecurity of that means that we must do more to make sure that we can insulate our homes and insulate our tenants against the insecurities that those international market variances bring. So for me, yes, I recognise the work that's gone in, and I recognise the work that's coming forward, and I really appreciate that. However, I really do want to see us accelerate that work as quickly as we can. I know there'll be pressure on our officers, but the more we can do to accelerate that work and bring the insulation up to standard and then beyond EPPCC is something that we must all strive for at the earliest possible opportunity. We should not leave anybody behind, so bringing those houses that are poorly insulated up to level now is a priority, and we recognise that. One thing that I do want to see, and one thing that I've put in this motion, and I hope we can all ascribe to, is we don't leave anybody behind and we don't do anything to our tenants. We've seen repeatedly throughout today's meeting and in previous meetings of this council that we are seen to not listen to our tenants, listen to our residents, listen to those that our decisions affect. I really do want to comment and focus on the fact that we must bring our tenants with us. And throughout transitional committee three, we've already brought forward a suggestion that we work on that consultation, on what barriers there are to improving insulation standards on housing and moving them further beyond that. And I'd really welcome support from everybody in this room to make sure that our tenants' voices are heard properly throughout this process. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Pashak, I may call upon you to second the amendment, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I agree with the comments of colleagues I've made previously about the staff and the work that they've done over the past few years with the Covid and the difficulties that that's created. But I'd also like to say, as our amendment says, we welcome the five years of investment that we've already had in properties, bringing a lot of them up to the EPPCC standard and the work that's already started on the roadmap to net zero. We ask that the council recognises the achievements to date in that of the 30,000 council homes that we currently manage, less than 7,000 are yet to get to EPPCC, and of these, work is either already underway or planned. The housing department already has a roadmap to net zero in development and is aiming to start this in the spring. This will include taking the advice on current and cutting-edge developments to achieve this. While we welcome the suggestions of a particular company by the Green Party, we are bound by procurement rules to ensure that we achieve best value for money, and that includes whole life costs, including maintenance and spares of anything that we put into homes. It is highly likely that as the market evolves and other companies and other products become available, these are likely to improve in both performance and cost. And the energy sprung model at the moment is averaging out at £85,000 per property. That has to be reduced in order for it to be viable and for it to go on. In addition to this, we must be mindful of housing legislation that requires that we consult on any changes to policy with tenants, especially where those changes could increase their rents or result in additional charges. And this programme is highly likely to do that because of the technology. As the suggested cost of the system proposed is significantly higher already than some out there, we would have to look at this and be very careful as part of our due diligence. However, to end on a positive note, I would like to acknowledge the work already underway in this area and look forward to the research and achievements going forward, but obviously taking our 30,000 households along with us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. May I call upon councillor Johnson to move amendment number two? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you. So in our motion here, there are two drivers behind our amendment. One is a serious attempt to tackle climate change, no surprise, and the other is equally serious a drive on social justice. And you'll have seen in the report that we're being asked to approve today that we propose to nearly double the unit cost of energy to our tenants. And I'm afraid that's unavoidable. That is the reflection of how fuel prices are changing the world at the moment, but going up, nearly a doubling of that unit cost. What I want to see are warm homes for tenants, and I want to see healthy homes for tenants, and I want to see lots of them. And really, our officers have done good work in getting grants in from government and, you know, upscaling the insulation of council homes where we can do that. And some of the social housing providers have done that, too. But actually, we need to scale this up. We need to make sure that we have good, modern-looking, warm homes for all our tenants if we can possibly do that. And of course, this is a big challenge. But this is a completely radical approach, and that is why I think there are a few misapprehensions about it. And actually, our speaker, councillor Pashek, made a couple of things which actually are just wrong. just wrong, and this is a bit counterintuitive to the way we think of waiting for government handouts and then having to do something. And so first of all, saying that Energy Sprung is a contractor and we have to go through procurement, actually, that fundamentally misunderstands that. There's no cost to us using their service. They're not a commercial organisation, they're a charity. It's something that's been paid for by actually a consortium of slightly more progressive councils. And second, the unit cost, it's actually far lower than that measure of figure of £85,000 per house. Really, that's a lot. It's currently actually about £70,000, and we want to reduce this significantly below that. And the point about this is doing this at scale. The point about this is about introducing jobs and skills in Sheffield and South Yorkshire, and this gives Sheffield a real opportunity to be a leader here. So that's the basis of the amendment.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Gilligan to second that amendment, please?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I won't repeat what's already been said. I think we're all very aware of the need to retrofit our homes. It's an urgent need, not only for social justice but for climate change. And to do this, I think as Douglas Johnson and Josie, as councillor Pachek, were pointing out, we need a financial model which enables us to do this at scale, because it's not very likely the national government is going to give us the money we need to take our houses to the zero energy standard. The Energy Sprung model promises an average energy cost at the moment of around £1,000 a year for each household. Half of that cost is a comfort charge and half of that is the energy bills. If we look at what people are paying at the moment before the price increases, it's about £1,200. So the Energy Sprung model looks a good deal for householders. Of course, sorry, just got to move my screen. Of course, we recognise that it's up to tenants whether they want to accept this model or not, and we would, of course, consult with tenants and make sure they understand what they're doing. Around the country, other councils have adopted this, Nottingham, Exeter and some of the London boroughs, and they are collaborating and sharing best practice, and I think Sheffield should be in there as well, sharing best practice on this new technology. We have a motion on this later on, and the Lib Dems talk about considering other approaches to retrofitting, but they don't actually outline what is available at the moment. And this is the point, at the moment, we don't know what alternatives there are. We are aware that Energy Sprung isn't going to be the only way, but it seems to be the best at the moment. So I urge everybody to look at this motion and take it on board. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the debate on the matter. May I remind members using the roving microphone that when I invite you to speak, it would assist if you could stand so that you can be easily seen by staff and quite frankly be heard? So thank you for that. Brian Lodge.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to welcome the housing revenue account that's coming in here, and just pick out some of the points that are in there that we should be celebrating that are right here. We all know about the shortage of homes in the city, and the housing revenue account is now looking to develop over 3,000 new homes across this city, desperately needed homes. I can speak from in Burley Ward, where we've already seen new council housing that was open and tenants moved in last year, and how greatly appreciated there were family homes that people need desperately out in that part of the city. The number of people that were applying for them exceeded the number of properties that were available. But we're also looking elsewhere in Burley Ward. There's a development that's going to go on on the Newstead Estate, where we're going to see more family homes, we're going to see a variety of homes, we're going to see mixed tenure homes coming in there, but we're seeing a lot of council house building. We're seeing an older person's independent living scheme that's coming in that will be developed and release family homes if people want to move into that supported living and in that environment, maintaining their independence. And it's right that we look to the refurbishment and insulation of our council housing stocks and make sure that tenants have got the best facilities that they can and with the best insulation that we can. And again, across Burley Ward, I can see homes all over, in Basemore, in Burley, in Freshville, in Hackenthorpe, where the roofs are being replaced, it's improving the insulation in those homes. I think there's a fantastic opportunity for our tenants here, for the council moving forward. We need to do more for improving the energy efficiency of our stock, and we need to look at all the options available. But let's not forget, we need more homes as well, and I welcome the news that this housing revenue account will invest in that for the future. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Anders Sankar.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and we shall be supporting the HRA and the Labour amendment. Clearly, the whole city has passed a climate emergency in terms of 2030. We need to get our council stock up to standard in terms of insulation and in terms of renewable energy. But the challenge, Lord Mayor, the challenges in the figures, as councillor Pachek has mentioned, whether it's £85,000 or £70,000 doesn't really matter, because those of us who still carry the scars of the Decent Homes debate over the years and up to the past decade remember that that ended up an investment of just over £20,000 per property. So what we're saying here, even if you can get the numbers down, the Energy Sprung figures down to 40K, which is the most optimistic figure that seems to be available, even that it's twice as ambitious as the Decent Home Scheme, where Sheffield's Decent Home Scheme was one of the biggest contributors from the government. So to get Energy Sprung for our homes is going to require a lot of close working with the government and other ways of finding money. So we're open to ideas, we're open to having Energy Sprung as part of the mix, but it can't be the only answer. Lord Mayor, our concern, when we listen to tenants, we have two concerns. One is why is the telephone service, and I hear that you've put in more investment, but it's still 44 minutes, and that poor tenant who was waiting almost three hours to get an answer. And I think the other problem is the backlog on housing repairs. We still have a 57-day backlog of repairs, we still have 12,800 repairs, and that's what tenants want to see. So yes, the investment is welcome, yes, the 3,100 new homes, very, very welcome, we will support that, yes, the £650 million, but can we also get the basics right? Can we get our housing repair service and our housing response service on the phones as good as possible? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sankar. I haven't had anyone else indicate that they wish to speak, so I'm not... Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I can't... Councillor Masters, stand up, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, I wasn't going to speak at this stage, but it looks as if the norm involving Energy Sprung is not going to be sort of debated. So I wish to point out, first of all, it is not suitable for a lot of our housing stock. It might be an ideal situation, gold standard, but it relies so much on the construction of the existing property as to what is feasible. The second thing is it uses air-sourced or ground-sourced heat pumps, and again, anybody who knows about engineering knows that they are dependent on ambient temperature to be efficient, therefore, again, they are not suitable. There are other things, we are looking at other things, which allow a quick fix for certain homes in certain situations, as well as long-term solutions which will address the whole range of properties in Sheffield, not just a select few, leaving thousands still in the cold in fuel poverty for quite a few years to come. So it is not a quick fix. It may sound great on paper, but there are issues with it, as you will know, that if you've researched the Nottingham figures fully. And the other thing is, of course, with air sourcing, I mean, I asked a question, Terry Fox wasn't here, but about mine water heating. This chamber accepted our amendment to explore mine water heating as a geothermal, completely renewable source of heating for homes in the future, and councillor Fox actually agreed that this is being explored. So there are more things out there than just this reliance on one form of insulation and heating for homes. So look at the specifications and you will realise it is not suitable for a lot of our housing stock. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Masters. Cal. Seb. Have we got a microphone at this side? I know you don't need one, Mike, but just in case a few of us are there.
Okay. Can you hear me? I just wanted to say one or two words. I think over the years, we've actually done a pretty good job between us in bringing in investment into council housing in this city. We've got some of the best that there is. We've also unfortunately got some of the worst, and some of the worst is actually in the private sector. And at some stage, we've got to find a real plan that is going to deal with the private sector. I'm sure people are working on it, but at this moment in time, I'm not quite sure how we're going to deal with the eye-watering numbers that are involved in trying to deal with that. But my main point was really to say that there's always an assumption that when the cost of bringing gas or electric into our homes goes up, that the consumer, us, pay for that. And until somebody challenges that basic principle that when there's a price increase, we have to fork out more and more of our pockets, we're only going to be tinkering with the problem. We may well put really good insulation into our homes, but the companies will then find a way of still maintaining their profits by putting up the cost of the units. And we need, as a society, and we need a government that challenges the assumption that once the prices or the production of our fuel goes up, we pay for it. That shouldn't always be the case.
Thank you, councillor Rooney.
Lord Mayor, may I move under council procedure rule 17.14 that the question now be put on the grounds that we have time to debate the local spatial plan and bearing in mind that a moment ago you didn't have any speakers?
Councillor Otten and everybody, I think in light of the meeting starting late, I've spoken to the whips, and we should continue with an extra 20 minutes, that's about how long we didn't have. So I'm going to let councillor Holmes show, because he has indicated to speak, and I didn't see him, someone had to tell me. So councillor Holmes show.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'm sorry, Joe, but thank you. Councillor Otten. Energy Sprung has one major advantage over some of the other schemes that are potentially going to be put forward in the future, and we don't know what they will be. But the climate emergency is a very real and present threat, so we do need to be moving ahead right now. The advantage that Energy Sprung has is they are an adviser, not a provider, and as such, they are used by several other councils, including Labour-led ones, and we ought to be looking very seriously at this scheme to get us off and running. So we'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McDonald, your right of reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's been a good debate this afternoon. I don't think there are any outstanding matters that haven't come up in the debate, so I'm happy for it to go to the vote. Thank you.
I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number one, moved by councillor Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph? As a whole? Yes? All those in favour? Is that unanimous? Are there any abstentions? No? That's good. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number two, moved by councillor Johnson. All those in favour? Any against? Thank you. Any amendment? Any abstentions? That's carried. I'm now going to move... Sorry? That was carried, wasn't it? So we're now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Are members happy to vote on the motion as a whole or in parts or separate paragraphs? Okay. All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Brilliant, that's carried. We are now going to move to item seven on the agenda, the Sheffield Local Plan. There is a minimum of time for 25 minutes for this item. This item of business is to provide to the cooperative executive and councils, council the view of whether option three or one of the other four options within the report of the executive director place should be preferred overall. Options are taken in this publication... Sorry, I do apologise. For the draft Sheffield Plan, the executive director's report was published with the agenda for this meeting. Option three had been recommended as the preferred overall option by the Climate Change, Economy and Development Transitions Committee when it was considered at its meeting on the 13th of January. The motion that council agreed with the advice provided by the Climate Change, Economy and Development Transitions Committee and recommended was option three as a preferred overall option that should be taken forward in the publication. Pre-submission draft Sheffield Plan is to be moved by councillor Mark Jones and seconded by councillor Martin Smith. There are three proposed amendments to consider. So may I call upon councillor Jones to move the motion? You may speak up to three minutes, councillor Jones.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm honoured and privileged to be proposing this. It's indicative of the way the council is changing. We're moving away from it being the cabinet member or the cooperative member to bring it, and we're moving towards the committees, and we recognise that in the work that the officers have done with Transitional Committee Three and all the members have done within that Transitional Committee. I'd like to acknowledge the support from my deputy, Barbara Masters, at the far end of this aisle, for supporting me in that endeavour, and the officers for bringing the information and helping us make an informed choice. It wasn't an easy one, we have to say, and I'm a little disappointed at some of the amendments that I see here today, particularly one which doesn't seem to take on board that we have tried to reflect exactly what the people of Sheffield have said, but when government arbitrarily dumps an extra 35% uplift from a calculation that can't be substantiated on us, a total disrespect and ignorance of the wishes of people of Sheffield, we have to challenge that. It's not acceptable. Government needs to look at itself and say, what are they playing at? The level of growth that government is expecting Sheffield to undertake is not appropriate, and that was very much covered by all the people within the committee. We heard evidence as to what we should be doing, how Sheffield should be growing and what our city should look like, as defined by the people of Sheffield, not by some idiot down in London, frankly. I probably shouldn't be using that language, so I apologise for that. More than anything, I am really proud of the way that the committees worked, I'm really proud of the way that they've put the effort in to bring this forward and to finally get the local plan en route, get it on track, because we have struggled with this, and the fact that we've been able to come up with a spatial option is amazing, because for the first time in many, many years, for almost two decades, Sheffield will have a local plan that we will be able to give to developers out there and say, this is what we want our city to look like. If you want to be part of that journey, this is what we'll expect from you. So thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to everyone within that committee and certainly to the officers for supporting us. I'd like to support option three going forward and move this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. May I call upon councillor Smith to second the motion? You may speak up to two minutes, councillor. You may speak up to two minutes, councillor Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd like to echo the comments of councillor Jones about the officer support and the way in which committee business was handled. I'd like to join my Lib Dem colleagues who took the lead in the committee on voting for option three. And we all know this decision should have been taken a long, long time ago. It's a scandal that the outcome of previous consultation exercises were largely ignored by previous administrations, but it's great that we've got here. Option three is consistent with the overwhelming response to the issues and options consultation exercise. There is a public mandate for it. It meets the housing and employment needs of the city. It protects the maximum amount of our precious green space. And as councillor Jones said, if we don't get on with this soon, there's a real risk of national government stepping in and imposing a housing target on us, for which, frankly, there is no basis in fact. I'd also like to highlight problems with options four and the surprising, astonishing U-turn of our Green colleagues. Option four would build on more of the current green belt. Officers report that it could put more... correction. Officers report that it could put urban regeneration at risk, and it could lead to more pollution and have an adverse impact on the council's net zero target. Only two months before the last local elections, the Sheffield Green Party went on public record to say they didn't support the release of green belt land. Now it looks like the exact opposite.
Can you sum up, councillor Smith, please?
And allegedly protect the green belt by building on more of it. I believe this is wrong, and I urge other members of the council to support option three and reject option four. Thank you.
There are three proposed amendments, and these are three, four and five on the list of amendments circulated today. May I call upon councillor Diane Hurst, please, to move amendment number three? You must speak up to two minutes, councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't normally speak on full council day because I've got other things to do, but this is a topic that I feel really passionately about. I was a member of the Transitional Committee that undertook the piece of work around the spatial options which were on the table. And I have to thank officers. It's turning into a chorus, this, isn't it? But I really do have to thank officers for the amount of information that they've prepared and they've brought forward to us so that every member of that Transitional Committee could feel that they were informed and able to make a proper, informed vote. And it was a rigorous process. And we've come out with a recommendation. As Chair of Planning, I know the effects that the government's decision to suddenly and arbitrarily increase the housing target by 35% has had on officers. We're just open, it's left the city open and vulnerable to speculative applications from developers. The officers have very limited means because we no longer have a five-year housing supply. They have limited options to reject. So it's open season. And as a city, we are ambitious. We are ambitious, but we're ambitious to create homes and communities, sustainable homes and communities that have green open spaces and facilities and amenities where people want to live. And that's what we want to do, and we want to do it under our control. And that's why I reject absolutely out of hand option five, because it's the only one that would satisfy the government's overambitious targets that actually have no basis in fact. I note even councillor Chin Chen doesn't support his own party's ambitions for Sheffield either, because he's got an amendment coming up where he wants to support spatial option one. But having said that, I ask you to... we need a plan to move forward.
Sorry, councillor Hurst, your time is up.
We need to be able to build homes, and that's why I ask you to support the spatial option three as the most appropriate and balanced option. Thank you.
Don't stand, councillor. I appear to sit down. Councillor Chris Roslin-Jones.
Oh, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm happy to support and in fact honoured to support this amendment. And again, I'd like to thank officers. Over the years I've been here, I do like to torment officers in planning that if we get any design of a building that's over seven stories, they seem to get nosebleeds. I think there's a lot of members seem to get the same condition. This spatial plan, and again, supporting the option three, is not just about homes and places for people to live, it's also about employment and other opportunities. And people seem to think that a piece of land is one or the other. In a city centre, it should be much more. It can be a place of employment and a place where people live and a place where people go for entertainment. We can have multipurpose high-rise buildings in this city. They have them in other countries. They are fantastic buildings, and we should be looking at that seriously. On the government, as councillor Hurst said, to dump an extra 35%, we know that was a political decision to save the green belt in the south-east of this country rather than... and in the Tory shares rather than looking what actually people of Sheffield need. And councillor Chin Chen, option one, yeah, it's a great idea, option one, only build on brownfield sites. Again, you'd be building a lot of high-rise in places where there don't need to be. We either build up or we build out in the city. This is a great city. It's a fantastic city. I've had an honour of representing it for 27 years. I still feel passionate for this city. Let's build something iconic that's multi-use, multi-generational, sustainable. Let's make this spatial plan sustainable. Let's vote for option three.
Thank you, councillor. May I now call upon councillor Paul Turpin to move amendment number four? You may speak up to four minutes... sorry, no, he can't speak for four minutes. Two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Buffling Tory amendment, the only option that could fulfil his government's uplifted target is option five, so why go for option one? Despite what councillor Smith said, option four was the officer's recommendation, so perhaps he's misunderstood that. Option three is okay, but we believe option four is better, and we will do what we believe to be best for Sheffield, not necessarily what we think will boost our vote share. We are proposing option four because this is the option that will best protect our urban green spaces, spaces like Althorp Fields and rewilded sites within the urban area. These sites are often of greater ecological value than some parts of the green belt that may have been saturated in pesticides and herbicides for decades. They are more often than not of greater social value, because they are literally where people live and they are used by people. They're a crucial part of the nature recovery and play an important part in people's wellbeing and health. It would also allow a greater offering of homes to be built, better quality homes with better amenities, both natural and man-made. So I doubt you will, but I urge you to vote for our amendment. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
May I call upon councillor Johnson to second that amendment, please?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. And just in seconding that, of course, actually, as Paul just said, some of the, what we call brownfield space or scrubland or unused space, to use those words, in the city centre and in all the wards that we represent, I'll put it well, all of us anyway, is actually incredibly valuable, you know, not just for the biodiversity and all the stuff we talk about, which we say is an emergency, but actually for the people there. The idea of building on every available piece of land in the entire urban area of a city is something that, as we know, doesn't go down well with any of our constituents. And they're right about that, because actually, that bit of space next to where people live is incredibly important. So I think it's fair to say that we don't want to be building in the green belt, but at the same time, this isn't the time to constrain us into building on every single piece of land within the urban area. And that's, of course, we can understand the professional views of the planning officers who put forward this, and I know with some reluctance, and I know in the face of, you know, a completely ridiculous and arbitrary imposition of a random number of houses by governments that will never be built because no one actually wants them. And, you know, that's known. But it's our officers that have advised us that option four is the better one to go for. And yet, actually, I agree with the officers. It's not always the case, but in this instance, they do. And for those reasons. So I think it is about quality of life. It's not just about the sentimentality of the green belt. And then just finally, speaking very briefly from my personal knowledge, that there are some instances of rural poverty which we very rarely talk about in the city. And that is, when you restrain any building whatsoever in those greenbelt areas, even in national parks...
Councillor Johnson, your time is up.
I will just finish there. They do cause rural poverty for those things, and you think about, you know, essential granny flats for care and keeping communities and families together.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. May I call upon councillor Lewis Chin Chen to move amendment number five, please?
I've always said that we need more homes in Sheffield, but we need the homes in the right places. Sheffield has a fantastic reputation for being the outdoor city, and we need to preserve that. And that means focusing on brownfield development, which not only protects our green spaces, but also cleans up our city. The results of the issues and options consultation showed that Sheffielders were strongly against development on low-quality urban green space and on green belt land, although they supported the reuse of brownfield sites. The only option put before us today that actually takes on board what the people of Sheffield want is option one, and all other options involve building on green space. And that puts sites in my ward, like Hollinbusk, at risk. And it puts other unsuitable green spaces across the city at risk. Now, of course, we need to be ambitious with our local plan so people have the opportunity to get on the housing ladder and own their own home. But we also need to protect one of our city's main selling points, which is its green space, and recognise that many areas of the city have seen a huge number of homes built in recent years. Option one delivers on our jobs growth target, gives Sheffield the thousands of homes it needs, protects our green spaces and preserves our reputation as the outdoor city. That's why I'm moving this amendment today. And I would like to point out to the Labour group that councillor Mazza Iqbal supported option one at the committee stage. Thank you.
The amendment is formally seconded by myself. We now move to the debate on the matter. May I remind members seated on the floor that when I invite you to speak, it would assist if you could stand so that we can easily see you and staff can deliver the microphone. Councillor Shafak Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Members in this hall and citizens of the city will be asking themselves, why has it taken so long for us to get here when this is the option that was consulted on years ago? And serious questions have to be asked about the decisions or lack of decisions made by the leadership of previous Labour councillors. That said, we are making progress, and I'm grateful for the work of the committee, T3, and in particular, my colleagues, councillor Marty Smith, Barbara Masters and Tim Hogan, who's not here, in terms of taking the lead and leading on this and actually advocating the option three. I have to say, from the Greens, it's really ironic. People out there who voted Green will be scratching their heads, thinking, what have you actually voted for? Because we had councillor Douglas Johnson earlier advocating a problem of traffic and congestion through Ecclesall, but then he's advocating now to build even more on the green belt. Is that what Green voters voted for? It's Green councillors that come here and advocate building on the green belt. I'll be honest with you, you would have been the last bunch of councillors I would have fought that would have built on the green belt. But I'm amazed. But then again, having seen what happened earlier today, I shouldn't be. So, colleagues, the recommendation of the committee was clear. Option three is the way forward. I hope you support the work of that committee and actually today, we unite to all vote for option three and reject the recklessness of the Green Party who want to build on our green belt. Amazing. I'm sure those who voted for them might also share my concerns.
Thank you. Councillor Iqbal.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I also thank the committee for their support and hard work and the officers as well? Just to reflect on some of the comments that have been made by councillor Shafak and councillor Smith, the delay was due to the first proposals that the officers brought was that we were to build 20,000 homes on the green belt, 20,000. That number has now significantly been reduced because the previous administration, I remember councillor Doug going down to London to speak to ministers and civil servants, and I think it was just a few weeks ago when I made the announcement regarding the city centre vision. The delay was that we are no longer building 20,000 homes on the green belt. Instead, we're developing neighbourhoods and homes in the city centre. So that's why we've had the delay. Now, picking up councillor Chin Chen's point regarding, I voted for option one, the reason for that, and you can play it back and get yourself a drink and some popcorn while you're at it as well. Because I voted for option one because it wasn't a binding vote. And as I said there, if it was binding, I would have voted for option three. If you could do me a favour through you, Lord Mayor, if you could have a word with your colleagues down at number 10, because they're the ones that have got this 35% figure on the back of a packet, if you could ask them to expand on how they've arrived at this 35% figure, because not just me or the committee, but Sheffielders deserve to understand how they've arrived at this figure. But we will continue with the plan.
Thank you, councillor Iqbal, your time is up.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can you hear... yes. I wish to speak in support of option three. We know why greenfield sites are so sought after. They provide the greatest returns to the developers, while brownfield sites often need a substantial amount of preliminary work which eats into profit margins. I just find it unacceptable that in the 21st century, we are prepared to accept places in the city boundaries that are not up to a standard which can support homes, workplaces and recreational spaces because of what lies in or on the ground. Whatever their size, they are a blight on their neighbourhoods. Why would a developer choose to move into areas where there are known problems if greenfield sites are available? One of the purposes of the local plan should aim to make all parts of Sheffield desirable to live in. Option four does not do that. The officer's report states it risks undermining urban regeneration. It would also increase commuter travel, and we've just had a debate on the problems that creates closer to the city centre. Already, we know of parcels of land in the green belt being brought up by developers who are anticipating a relaxation of the rules. Even a release of a few sites will require a supporting infrastructure, and once that is in place, the pressure to build more will intensify. Urban sites suffering neglect will continue to be neglected. We have a responsibility to our communities to prevent that. Option three will encourage the cleaning up of problematic sites, provide a range of new homes in a number of locations, provide land for employment and allow us to develop as an outdoor city while protecting the landscape for future generations.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Two weeks ago, I was in the Transitional Committee discussing the local plan, while at the same time in high green, on a large section of Green Belt land, surveyed all working over three days to work out how many houses could be built there. This surveying has been going on for over four years, on both private and council-owned land, across many hundreds of acres of Green Belt. Yet there is planning approval for 12,000 homes in this city not yet started. It's simple. Because developers and landowners want to cash in on lucrative Green Belt development. And as far as they're concerned, it is a top priority once the local plan is approved. Whilst the Greens state in their amendment that very small amounts of Green Belt will be affected, the officer's clearly said 150 to 200 homes a year across three large developments will be built on in the Green Belt. That's many thousands of homes. I don't call that a small amount. Our top priority is to hold this government to account on brownfield clean-up. We have a spoil heap, the last one in South Yorkshire in Chapel Town, still there in the Green Belt. Brownfield in the Green Belt, it needs cleaning up. If moving the Green Belt boundary is there, it's sure as eggs are eggs, the government will take it if it saves money on clean-up. They shouldn't have that option. We want our housing plan to deliver the housing needs of this city, where we have as far as possible developed infrastructure, not undeveloped land on the outskirts of the city. Clean up our industrial brownfield legacy, preserve our Green Belt, and vote for option three. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Richards, please.
Right, it's not like me to go against what the Lord Mayor says, but as this is one of the few opportunities I'm going to have to be political, I'm actually just going to address the amendments that's come from councillor Chin Chen, because this is nimbyism. Not only that, it won't even fulfil his own government's requirements, and by that, I mean the old plan, not even the new plan, which we know is impossible. Option one means people not getting housing. We have a huge waiting list. We need affordable homes for so many of our young people. Councillor Chin Chen's proposal doesn't help them at all. And young people need affordable housing in rural areas as well, places where they work, usually in low-paid jobs, so they need not great big rural pads, but some decent affordable housing in those areas. I don't think this amendment is going to help anyone who needs an affordable home, a starter home, in rural areas or indeed in our more urban areas. Lewis, option three is actually the one that's going to help your constituents, who you've said you're concerned about the most, so I'd urge you to think again and support option three. Thank you, everybody.
Councillor Ross. Flirt McGroomy will be next.
Thank you very much. Councillor Johnson actually gave it away when he said of the 53,000 target, it will never be built. I agree with that bit, but what will be built first will be the Green Belt areas, because developers are looking to develop there because they're attractive, and more importantly to them, that is where it is more profitable to be, for them to develop. Bizarrely, it will leave brownfield sites and sites that have already got planning permission undeveloped as the race to develop on the Green Belt accelerates, and it'll be there first. And again, as has already been pointed out, increasing commuter traffic down Ecclesall Road, Abidale Road, and others. I think councillor Johnson, you were going to also propose building in the national park before you ran out of time. It's unfortunate that you ran out of time, because that would have been another bizarre pronouncement from the Green Party, contradicting what they said prior to the local elections. It'll be quite interesting to see what you say prior to these next local elections, having cognisance of what you've done on two major items of business in this council today. So, like most of the other sensible speakers in here, I am also urging you all to support option three. Reject the green amendment that puts the Green Belt in peril, and reject the conservative amendment, which actually will not deliver the homes that we need in total. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Ross. Councillor Holmes, and then councillor Little.
I wanted to respond by saying how this caricature of our party's amendment is wrong. Firstly, option three will allow development on the Green Belt. Let's not forget that I've been a councillor on Planning Committee, and over the years, not all of them have been on Planning Committee, but I've seen it over the years, that decisions have been made and decisions not made that fly in the face of reality on the ground. Decisions that have wrecked some of our most important, valuable, ecologically sensitive, and prized green spaces, and denied access to those green spaces for people who live near to them. Some of these decisions can be unmade, but it's going to be at great cost and with great difficulty. What we need to avoid, and this amendment allows us to do that, is not to make those bad decisions in the first place, and then have to unmake them years down the line or not be able to. We want to come across a situation where an area, on planning, I must say, that an area what was brownfield, or was used for farming in the 1960s and now isn't, it's now a beautiful, a verdant, and ecologically rich area, we should be allowed to change that designation from brownbelt to greenbelt, or greenfield. And this, option four, will allow us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this characterisation of what the Greens are for has again been highlighted here today. I come from a rural community. I grew up there until I was 20. I would have loved to stay there, I went to agricultural college, but I couldn't move the, I couldn't actually live and work in the community I grew up in, because the houses that were council houses, as it were, had been bought up. The houses that were attached to the farming community in my area were being bought up by commuters who were far too rich for their own good, and they actually forced people like myself out into cities. We want, as Greens, and I hope you want, people to be able to live and work within 15 minutes of where they live, actually preferably better than that, so they can live and work locally, so they can grow food for us in more urban areas. I welcome this amendment. It's asking for accepting very small amounts of development. Now, we're not saying these are for developers, this is social housing we're talking about predominantly, small amounts, so that people who have grown up in those areas have got somewhere to move into, somewhere for their families to grow up and feel that this is our home. Houses are not homes. Homes are homes. They are not commodities. And I think we've fallen into this trap by thinking about these spatial options...
Your time is up councillor Little.
...by thinking as all as individuals...
Thank you.
...in our own little four walls. Thank you. I urge you to support our amendment.
Last but not least, the father of the house, councillor Price.
No, I don't, Lord Mayor. Just thought I'd get my oar in. Just to say this, Lord Mayor, one of the greatest achievements of the Ashley government was the creation of the Green Belt, and it was put there to protect working people and give them the opportunity to enjoy the countryside. So we've got to do our best to protect the Green Belt. Having said that, I represent an area which is very much covered with brownfield sites, brownfield sites that we're desperate to turn into greenfields. Houses have been demolished, and we're desperately to get a village green. But because it's labelled brownfield, it means that will be built on, and I'm desperate to try and protect that. So we've got to be prepared to compromise and see what we can achieve across our city. It's monstrous what the government's done. 40,000 more homes in this city is outrageous to try and to create space for them. And, no, it was a figure plucked out of the air, added on to other cities around the country, and said, get on with it. And it would destroy this city if we're not careful. That's why I'm supporting all the high-rise stuff that we're getting to the city centre, because in that way, I can protect the Green Belt and at the same time, protect those little brownfield sites that I'm desperate to save down in Brightside, in Winkerbank, in Artdarnall, etc. That we've got to, the Victorians just created a nightmare down there, and we've got to correct that over the years to make them match the daughters and toddlers of this world, to get our city fair for everybody, environmentally as well as socially. So I hope, Lord Mayor, that we'll support option three, which gives us that opportunity. Thank you.
Councillor Jones, you have the right of reply, and you have up to two minutes to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's always difficult following whatever price he has to say. The father of our house and the wisdom of many of us, I think. I'm not going to grandad. The debate's really interesting, and actually, within Transitional Committee Three, there was a sentiment there, we could have got a position midway between option three and option four, and that may have been more appropriate to what we wanted. The general feeling within Transitional Committee Three was that option four opened the door, it was the thin end of the wedge that would have allowed developers to exploit our city. Whether that's just fears of myself and other members of that committee, I'm not sure, but that was the reason why we erred towards a side of caution with option three. Option one is just insane, it doesn't deliver for our city, there's no sense to that, you can't get the numbers of houses in, the density you'd be creating just doesn't work. We need to make sure that our urban area is appropriate for the future environment we'll be having. We can't have an intensification of the urban heat island by overmassing houses within the city centre. And I know where Doug's coming from in wanting to protect some of those spaces that people walk dogs on and everything else that we're becoming familiar with, and as councillor Price eloquently alluded to in his own ward, option three will not mean that we'll build on every brownfield site within the urban area. That simply isn't going to be the case. We heard that from officers, and that was what was said. So I appreciate the debate today, I would hope that everyone can back option three, and hopefully, as we go forward, maybe we will see an evolution towards a position that's 3.5, or 3.4, that would be okay, we can get a consensus. But more than anything, I'd like to reflect again on the work taken out by the Transitional Committee and the comradely and respectful manner in which that work was carried out. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I'm now going to go to, sorry, I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment three, moved by councillor Hurst. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph?
Lord Mayor, abstaining, will be voting for clause I, which has been relettered, it was clause H in the first circulated version, but it's now called clause I, we'll be voting for that.
Thank you councillor Pips.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. So in voting for, we'll be voting against I.
All those in favour of amendment three, please raise your hands now. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment four, moved by councillor Paul Turpin. Are members happy to vote on this amendment as a whole or in each separate part?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting against this amendment, we are voting for B.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, can we have a recorded vote, please?
Have we got a vote for that? All those in favour, recorded vote? Thank you.
The Lord Mayor councillor Gail Smith.
No vote.
The deputy Lord Mayor councillor Sean Mair Richards.
Against.
Simon Clement Jones. Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosalind Joneses. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio. Brian Homeshaw. Calton Rivers. Talia Pissane. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercerow. Martin Pips. Tim Huggan. Mohammed Marouf. Ruth Milson. Mazza Iqbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Oatten. Colin Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Maya O'Rourke. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Fran Belbin. Abdul Kaya. Abtazan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Watercraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate McDonald. Paul Turpin. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayres. Christine Gilligan. George Lindell Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Marouf Raif. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. Jack Scott. Sophie Wilson. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Downs. Jane Dohm. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Lewis Chin Chen. Julie Groelcut. Francine Johnson. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leveray. Anne Whitaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Sateer. And Paul Wood. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
So that's carried in part because the Labour Group voted for paragraph B, but it is lost. I'm now going to vote to, sorry, I'm going to move to the vote, in fact, on amendment five, moved by councillor Lewis Chin Chen. Yeah, it's been logged in. All those... All those in... Sorry, are you voting in parts or as a whole?
Lord Mayor, in voting against, will be for A and B.
Thank you. Diane, councillor first. Nothing, nothing. Okay, all those in favour? All those against? Think that's lost, yeah? We're now going to vote on the substantive motion. Is there any voting in parts?
Lord Mayor, in voting for, we'll be voting against the clause that we voted against in the Green amendments.
Okay. All those in favour? All those against? Are there any abstentions? No? That's lost. Carried, I mean, sorry, sorry. It's a habit. Item number eight. Right, these are... You can see what time it is, colleagues. We are now not going to be doing any more speeches. We've come to the voting parts of this agenda. So item notice of motion number eight regarding getting on the road to bus franchising. It would have been councillor Fox, but he's not here.
It's councillor Downing now, if he could formally...
Yes, is it? Yes, thank you. Thank you, councillor Downing. Councillor Paschke? Thank you. May I call upon councillor Mohammed to move amendment number six, but you're not, so can you formally move it?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Auckland, can you formally second?
Yeah, we have got... I'm going to ask councillor Lodge to give us an announcement at the end of this meeting. Right, may I call upon councillor... Where am I? Mercerow, sorry. Could you formally move amendment number seven, please? Thank you. Councillor Martin Phipps, can you formally second? Thank you.
Right, we're now going to move on to amendment number six, moved by Shafak Mohammed. Are there any voting in parts or are we going to vote as a whole? No voting in parts. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Right, we're now going to move to the vote on amendment number seven, moved by councillor Mercerow. Are there any voting in parts or can we vote as a whole?
Lord Mayor, in voting against, will be for B.
Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Thank you. That's lost.
Lord Mayor, it was carried in part, but not being voted for.
Yeah. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Are members happy to vote as a whole or in parts? Yes? Somebody speak? Lewis, councillor Chinchen.
In voting for, I'll be against G of the original motion.
Thank you. All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any against? That's carried. Item of business number nine on the agenda, notice of motion regarding the fifteen-minute neighbourhood for Sheffield. Councillor Richard Shaw. Thank you. Councillor Sangar, can you formally second?
Formally second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Amendment number eight, councillor Mazza Ikbal, can you formally?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Mary Lee, can... Thank you. May I call upon councillor Turpin? Item number nine, we're now going to... You're not going to speak for two minutes. I'm sorry, I've lost.
The will to live.
I've lost the will to live. Thank you, councillor, thank you. Councillor Homeshaw, can you formally second? Thank you. We're now going to vote on the substantive... No, we're not. Page thirty-four, I've turned over two minutes pages, right. I'm going to move to the vote on amendment number eight. No, go on.
Can I vote in part?
Yes, of course you can. I didn't expect anything else.
So in voting for amendment eight, we're voting against deletion of the words, although I'm just an addition. Yeah, wow, that's loud. And so, yeah, in voting for this, we're voting for it, but against the deletion of all words mentioned at the start, so just voting for it to be an addition, which we've done before.
Thank you. All those in favour? Please raise your hands now. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Yeah, that's carried with the additional paragraphs. Are members voting in parts or as a whole?
Oh, sorry, councillor. In parts, please, Lord Mayor. In voting against this amendment, we are voting for two Q, one.
Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. All those against? So that's carried in part because of Q one. Thank you. Now going to move to the vote on the substantive. Do we want to vote in parts or as a whole?
Lord Mayor, so this is slightly complicated because of what's been happening with the amendments, but our original clauses are still in, so we'll vote for and we'll vote for overall. We're going to abstain on the clauses that Labour added, that we voted against a moment ago, but we're going to abstain on in this time. And we're going to vote against, again, the party for the Highway Code that we voted against a moment ago. Yeah, so against the green text, thank you.
The officers, do you understand that? All those in favour, please raise your hands now. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Item ten on the agenda, notice of motion regarding net zero energy homes for Sheffield. We're now going to vote on... Yeah, formally, can you move it, councillor Johnson, please?
Formally.
Thank you. Councillor Gilligan, can you formally second? Thank you. We now need to vote on amendment ten.
No, you haven't.
No, I haven't, because I'm going to ask you, please.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Price, can you formally second? Thank you. Now move to councillor Masters on amendment number eleven. Can you formally, please? Thank you, councillor Andy Sangar.
Formally second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We're now going to move to... Yeah, we are. Are members happy to vote as a whole or in parts on the substantive motion?
Oh, we've got a number one, number ten.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Can we please now vote on amendment number ten, councillor?
It's a lovely one.
It is, it's such a shame, councillor Richards. Okay, so are we going to vote in parts or as a whole? Okay, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That's carried. Vote on amendment eleven. Members want to vote in parts or as a whole? All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Thank you. That's carried. We're now going to move to the vote on amendment eleven. Oh, we've just done that one, haven't we? Sorry. Forty-two. Is there any voting in parts or are we going to vote for this as a whole? No voting in parts. Okay, all those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item eleven. On the agenda, notice of motion, cost of living crisis. We are going to vote on... Oh, yes. Councillor McGowan, can you formally move this, please? Thank you. Councillor Miskel, can you second it? Thank you very much. Amendment number twelve, councillor Leverie, can you formally move?
Formally move, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Oatten.
Formally second it, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Amendment number thirteen, councillor Little, can you formally move? Thank you. Councillor Turpin. Thank you. We're now going to move to the vote on amendment number twelve. Yeah, we've got some in parts, so councillor Hurst.
Lord Mayor, in voting against this amendment, we are voting for two E and F and abstaining on two G, H, I and J.
Yeah, all those in favour, please raise your hand now. Thank you. Any against? Thank you. Any abstentions? I think that... Sorry, we missed... Did the Greens vote against that? That is carried. Yeah, because of two E and F. Okay.
Lord Mayor, my understanding on that is that it was lost apart from E to F. E to J, which were all carried because Labour either voted for or abstained on those. So, sorry.
The Greens.
E to J are carried and the rest is lost, is that right?
Okay, I'm repeating this. Part one is lost. Two D is lost.
And two E to J is carried.
Now I can work... Sit down and work that out. Now going to move to the vote on amendment thirteen, councillor Little. Thank you. We've done that, haven't we?
If we're voting on thirteen, Lord Mayor, can we... Are we voting on thirteen?
Yeah, and that's in part.
That's in parts, yes.
We're voting against?
Yes, Labour want to vote in parts.
N and O.
Yes, yes, Lord Mayor. In voting against this amendment, we're voting for four N and O.
Lord Mayor?
Yes?
Please can I vote in parts? In voting against, I'll be for part four of this amendment. Thanks.
Now move to vote. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? So that's carried in part. So everything is lost apart from part four, N and O. So we're now going to vote on the substantive motion. Are there any voting in parts?
Lord Mayor, thank you. In voting for, we're going to abstain on the clauses that we deleted in our amendment, that's B, E, F and G from the original motion. And we're going to vote against, again, the bits of the Green amendment that have just got through.
Thank you. Councillor Hurst, have you got any voting in parts? No. Councillor Phipps?
So in voting for...
So, in voting for, we are voting against B and E from the substantive.
Lord Mayor? Lord Mayor, in voting against, I'll be voting for the bits of the green amendment that passed.
Okay, thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Twelve on the agenda, review of polling districts and polling places. There is a ma... There isn't. I'm going to call upon councillor Hurst to move this motion. Formally.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And councillor Phipps, formally second? Thank you. Now move to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Thank you. That's carried. Item 14, temporary change to the constitution. No. Item 13, external audit, re-procurement. Councillor Sean Edmire... Sean Ed Richards.
Vickers daughters are always called Mohammed. Formally, Lord Mayor.
I'm so sorry. Councillor Clement Jones?
Formally second, Lord Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. We're now going to vote on item 14, temporary change to the constitution. Councillor Hurst, can you formally move this, please?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Phipps, can you formally second? Thank you very much. We now move to item 15. Yeah, you'd like to vote on that, would you? I'm so sorry, I've absolutely lost it. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item 15, minutes from the previous council meeting, council of the council on the 18th of November and the 1st of December, to be approved as a true record. Can I ask councillor Diane Hurst to formally move?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Gary Weatherall?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. All agreed? Thank you. Item 16 on the agenda, representation delegated authority and related issues. It is moved by councillor Hurst and seconded by councillor Weatherall that approval be given to the changes of membership of committees, et cetera, the appointments of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at this meeting. Councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Weatherall?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I'm now going to move to the vote on that motion. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I don't know, I've just... I know, I know. Yes, thank you for your patience this afternoon. It's been a very difficult meeting. Yes, I'll get to that. There's far too many people in this room who want to chair this meeting. Thank you. Please update us, councillor Lodge, on our colleague that had to leave the meeting today.
Technology. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, just to let colleagues know that councillor Fox has let us know that she is at home resting, sat there. I'm sure she's sitting there watching us all now, thinking, well, I'm glad that they're all still here at 20 past 6. And don't worry about it, Denise, that you've kept us all here this long. I think some colleagues have suggested that councillor Terry Fox pampers her, but I think she's had enough hassle today without having to be put through that. But she'd just like to pass on a thanks to everybody for the concerns and that she is okay. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Brian, and we're all pleased to hear that she's all right, and we send our best wishes. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Have a nice evening, and I'll see you in not many weeks, three or four weeks, I think. Good night.